So if you look in a normal, a young person's eye, a child's eye, the lens is clear as water.
Uh huh.
And therefore, the pupil, when you look at it, looks nice and black. But with age, what happens is that human lens becomes cloudy. So when you look through the pupil here, there's a little yellowness or cloudiness there. So the cataract surgery is very simple. It just means taking out the cataract, which is the cloudy lens, and we replace it with a brand-new, clear, man-made lens. So it sounds like it's a big invasive procedure. Patients sometimes have a little bit of fear about it.
Well, of course.
There is surge on your eye, but the nice part is, with the more modern techniques, this entire surgery is: no needles, no stitches, no bleeding, and five minutes. Patients can literally see 10 minutes after the surgery.
That's fantastic. Now, what, the surgery consists of what? An incision in the eye?
Yeah, so the older way of doing the surgery was to make a very large incision. You had to make a large incision. And this is what you may remember if your mom or your grandfather had cataract surgery. They made a large incision, they took out their lens, sewed up the eye, and they had these big, thick glasses. Don't worry, that's a thing of the past. Surgeons who do more modern-day surgery, the eye is numbed with just eye drops. The body is awake, you're relaxed, the eye is numbed. A microscopic incision, less than one-eighth of an inch, is actually made with a gem-quality diamond. There's no steel knives.
Wow.
That little tiny gem-quality diamond makes a tiny incision. Your old cataract is broken up into 1,000 pieces and vacuumed right out of the eye.
Uh huh.
And now, to get the new lens in the eye, the new lens can be rolled up like a carpet, put in that tiny incision, and opened the eye. Therefore, the entire surgery can be done in just a few minutes with literally zero pain, zero stitches, and patients can recover vision within an hour.
Now, are they, is this lens that's inserted, does it correct vision as well, besides getting rid of the cloudiness?
Exactly. Remember this, cataract surgery. First, I always tell patients, "This is the most important surgery you'll have in your lifetime." And I say that because you will see the world every waking moment for the rest of your life through this surgery and through that lens.
Wow.
So this is a time where it doesn't matter if you bought the best HDTV. If you had an unfortunate situation with your surgery, you'll never realize the benefit of the TV.
Exactly so.
So the lens that goes in the eye is fortunate. We can not only correct the cataract, but at the very same time, fix your nearsightedness, your farsightedness, your astigmatism, even your need for reading glasses.
Whoa, and you're talking my language now.
So examples, examples, I did my mom's cataract surgery about a year and a half ago. Don't worry, I gave her discount. Now, in all seriousness, when I did my mom's surgery, I put in one of these new generation, we call premium lenses. So the lens my mom has in her eye can give her far vision and computer vision and reading vision, all without glasses. So now, my mom is certainly of the Medicare age, but she's among the only one of her friends so far who has absolutely no glasses.
Wow, that's fantastic. Now, that procedure, was it an intraocular procedure? Is that, or is that what the lens is called?
We call the lens an intraocular lens.
Uh huh.
This intraocular lens is actually in the eye, as opposed to a contact lens, which would sit on top of the eye, or glasses lens, which is in front of the eye. So intraocular lens means the lens is actually in the eye. You'll never feel the lens, you'll never see the lens. Someone who looks at you can't tell you've had a cataract surgery.
Wow.
So it's back in its normal anatomical position.
That is fantastic. Now, for our audience, what are the signs of impending trouble with your vision? I hear the expression floaters, or like little balls going through your vision, it seems like. People should be alert to that, shouldn't they?
I think it's important for everyone to get their eyes checked at least once a year.
Once a year? Eye check, okay.
If you're certainly of the Medicare age, you want to make sure you're being seen by an ophthalmologist, who's an M.D., a medical doctor, who specializes in eyes. Optometrists are great. These are doctors who are primarily doing the glasses and the contacts.
Right, of course. But an ophthalmologist is really the person you need to go to if you've seen these floaters or your vision is deteriorating.
Exactly. So fluctuations in vision can happen. Floaters are usually a different thing than cataracts. It's usually opacities in the gel of the eye.
Ah.
But important to be checked out, the normal signs of cataract are very slow and gradual, so patients don't often notice it immediately.
Yes.
It's as if a light is slowly being dimmed on you. Among the first signs patients notice are, you know, "It's tough for me to drive at night." "I used to like driving at night, now it's kind of tough. I want to be home before it's dark." Another thing is, "It's tough for me to read the street signs, even with my glasses," or "I can't see the words on CNN anymore."
Now, I know it gets people kind of squeamish and upset when they think about, "My goodness, surgery on my eyes." And yet, the patient experience can, in fact, be pretty easy, right?
Yeah, it can be very, in fact, even pleasant.
Really?
The surgery is literally only five minutes. And it's done when the patient's totally relaxed,
Right.
Awake, but in somewhat of a slight twilight state, so they're very easygoing. The eye is completely numb. I tell patients, "It takes about two drops of my medicine to numb the eye." So I put six or seven. And they laugh, but I say, "You know, I give the same surgery that I'd want to receive." And when I go to my dentist, I always tell him, "Hey, give me a little extra of the numbing medicine."
There you go. We actually have some video that your office provided, which sort of details, chronicles, the patient experience. And I'd like you to look at that video now, so you can be reassured this doctor knows what he's talking about.
Donna Gallagher, who just recently retired, is an energetic woman who stays very active. But Donna had a problem. The Los Angeles woman had cataracts developing. Her vision was worsening. Understandably, she wasn't happy.
I first began wearing glasses when I was in college. And as the years progressed, my vision became worse. And probably about 2003, the doctor that I went to said, "You've got cataracts forming."
Donna mentioned what was happening to her eyesight to her 83-year-old father, who was still a practicing physician in Southern California. He told her to do what he did and have the crystal lens implanted. So she called Los Angeles eye surgeon Uday Devgan, who had treated her father.
Donna's a very typical crystal lens patient. She came in, saw me, and she had mild to moderate cataracts. She could still see. She could eke out the letters to barely pass the driving test. But it wasn't enough functional vision for her to enjoy watching her new HDTV, enjoy reading a book, or drive at night. Everything went just beautifully.
Donna had been wearing glasses and contacts since high school. At first, she couldn't imagine her world without spectacles and contacts. But since her crystal lens surgery, she's been happily learning to live without depending on glasses.
That's a good option.
The crystal lens is a revolutionary technology that flexes like your eye's natural lens. The crystal lens often enables patients to see up close, far away, and everything in between.
I love to cook. And when I, once I retired, you know, I wanted to take cooking lessons, and I wanted to try all kinds of recipes. And I also love to watch old movies. But the problem is, the TV is kind of across the kitchen. And I'm up close here, working with my recipes, trying to figure out what I'm doing. So I would always have my glasses on a string around my neck, so that when I wanted to see what was happening, I'd have to put the glasses on, because I was nearsighted. And then, when I was ready to go back to cooking, I'd have to take the glasses off. Oh, how fun it is now. I don't have to take anything off or put it back on. I can see close up, and I can immediately look up, and I can see the television in the distance. I have thoroughly been enjoying that the last few days. It's been wonderful.
How does a patient know that crystal lens is right for them? The first thing you do is ask your doctor.
Eye surgeons these days, like me, offer the full spectrum of vision correction surgery. So we still do LASIK, laser eye surgery, for certain patients. For others, we implant a little contact lens. And for others, we do a cataract surgery. So the nice part is, now, the cataract surgery, when we do it, can offer all the identical benefits of the LASIK laser eye surgery at the same time. We tailor the specific surgery to the patient. How old is the patient? Do they have any, what eye conditions do they have? Do they have cataracts? What are their needs for their vision? And we aim to give them the specific type of surgery that will meet all their expectations.
Eye surgery can make a patient understandably a little anxious. Dr. Devgan discussed the ease of the surgery.
Beautiful. When you think about someone doing eye surgery on you, it sounds a little intimidating. There's a little bit of a fear involved there. But it's easy. It's very easy. This is a procedure that has no needles, no stitches. There's zero drops of blood. And it's absolutely pain-free. And it's a quick procedure. It's usually less than 10 minutes. So it's no more difficult, from the patient's perspective, than LASIK. One nice part about our surgery is, for a cataract surgery, the patient's only involvement is, they just need to relax.
For Donna Gallagher, life since her crystal lens surgery has been, well, an eye-opener. No more glasses around her neck. She's spending more productive time in the kitchen, enjoying getting outdoors and walking her beloved dog. But you know what she is really excited about? It's the colors.
I don't think I knew what I was missing was the problem. And I'm someone who loves color. When you look around my house, I do color everywhere. And I didn't realize that I wasn't seeing the brilliance of the colors that were not only in my home, but in the world. The next morning, when I got up, and my bathroom is this blue and this white, I literally had to get the surgical glasses and put them on my eyes, because I wasn't used to this brilliance that hit me. It was so gorgeous, now I'm used to it now, and it's wonderful.
Donna has dramatically improved vision that she hasn't enjoyed since she was a teenager. But there was one thing she wasn't ready for.
The next morning, when I got up after having my right eye done, which is my close-up lens, my nearsighted lens, totally destroyed me. Because what did I see? I saw every single wrinkle on my face. The next day, I had to go to my hairdresser. I saw every single pore on his face. I didn't know if I wanted to go around seeing people's pores on their faces. But now, I'm in a position of like, "Okay, maybe we have to consider plastic surgery. It's not beyond the realm of possibility now." So that's a warning. My makeup, I am so embarrassed to think that that's what people were seeing when I was going out. Because my makeup, I realized, "Oh my gosh, look what you were doing to yourself all these years." So at least now, hopefully, I'm a little better than I was. But I want to warn you, it's a shocker that first morning.
That one, great. One last drop.
Dr. Devgan likes the fact that there are vision correction options for his baby boomer and senior citizen patients. In the 10 years since the first crystal lens was implanted in the United States, it has led the way in vision correction.
One of the nice things in doing cataract surgery is that we can not only fix the cataract, but at the very same time, I can address any nearsightedness, farsightedness, astigmatism, whatever else ails your eye. So even people who've worn inch-thick glasses their entire lives, after I do their cataract surgery, I can give them sharp vision for almost all activities without glasses.
That was very reassuring, wouldn't you agree? So please stay tuned. We'll be back after these messages and continue this discussion on cataracts.
It's fun to be a good neighbor. So say hi to your new neighbors at the L.A. Zoo. And bring grandpa. They've got a walking buddy for him, too. They've expanded, so there's even more to see and do. Don't wonder who's here. It's just for kicks, they've got birds on sticks. Whatever you do, make sure mom and dad come early, because they're certainly ready to say hi to you. And this invitation comes from your good neighbors here at the L.A. Zoo.
Hey buddy, pull over! Pull to the right! Don't you know, red lights and sirens mean, "Pull to the right!" In an emergency, seconds count. So when you drive, pay attention, or else...
Save it, buddy. The ball call.
Hello, and welcome back to The Empowered Patient. I'm here at the Hollywood Wellness Center. And I have a very special guest, Phoebe Severs. How are you? Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
So I see that you're staying active and exercising here, huh?
Um, yes, I am. Quite a while ago, I realized there was a big, a long history of heart disease in my family. And I just decided that I had to take some action. So I started walking, I started doing exercise. And then I discovered Tai Chi. And first of all, it's a wonderful practice. It helps bone density, because you stand for an hour. It also helps high blood pressure, which I have.
Wow.
And I don't know, there are so many things. It lubricates your joints.
So this is wonderful. So you've been practicing Tai Chi. And with this, have you been seeing results? You said it helps with blood pressure. Have you noticed a change in your own blood pressure?
Absolutely. My blood pressure has gone down about five points.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And also, I had been on the borderline of osteoporosis. And it's much better. My bone density test is better.
So your bone density's improved, your blood pressure's improved, and this is all through staying physically active, physically fit. And for you, the core tying it all together is your Tai Chi?
I think so.
So this is great. So you're thinking preventative. You're thinking, "What can you do to stay ahead of things?" And you're keeping those joints fluid and practicing your Tai Chi. And there was great, I understand that you were using this booklet here, Exercise and Physical Activity. This is a product of the National Institute on Aging, and free and available. So for all of you watching at home, it's free and available. So I understand you were using this booklet here.
Yes.
So tell me, what was it that you found helpful in this booklet?
Well, I really found it very helpful in the sense that it teaches you, like, I would like to do weights. And they have a wonderful section about it. And they have pictures, they teach you exactly what you're supposed to be doing. And really, I found the whole book just absolutely full of wonderful information.
So that's great. And it even mentions the Tai Chi in there, I believe, yeah?
It does.
Yeah.
One more thing about Tai Chi. It does help your balance tremendously.
Absolutely. So I think really, a great take-home message for people watching at home. Lots of benefits that you've found from Tai Chi. Definitely, a huge benefit in helping with balance could really benefit a lot of people. Falls are a serious concern. We want to prevent those. But more than anything, that you found something that works for you. And now, you're building a program around that. And you're always looking to add different things, but you have a core of something that works for you.
Right.
I think that's very helpful. I think people watching at home might think of ways they can incorporate exercise and physical activity more prominently into their own lives.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, thank you for joining us. It was wonderful having you here.
Thank you.
And it's great to see you staying active. Exactly the kinds of things we're talking about on The Empowered Patient. Staying active, staying fit, so that we can live longer, live better, take charge of our health. Please call us, we'd love to hear from you. And we'd love to get these booklets out to you. You can call the number below. These are free and available to all of us. And thank you for joining us on The Empowered Patient. See you next time.
We're back with Dr. Uday Devgan, one of our area's finest ophthalmologists. And it's so amazing for me, because I have been afraid of eye surgery for many years. You can tell, I still wear glasses. I haven't done all of those corrective things. But the technology has really improved, hasn't it?
It's changed dramatically. In fact, now, it's hard to do modern-day cataract surgery without about a million dollars' worth of equipment.
I see this equipment scattered around your office. It's almost intimidating, but that's not the patient's experience, is it?
No, the patient's experience is actually the opposite. It's actually very simple and very easy. All our exams to measure the eye are done without even touching the eye. We literally just shine lights on your eye.
Wow.
During the surgery, the patient experience is very easy as well. The patient's relaxed, the eye's completely numb. The patients feel nothing.
And this is in the office, right?
Actually, we do, we like to do the surgeries in a real surgery center.
Oh, you do, okay.
We do, because a lot of our senior patients do have other medical issues. I always do it with an anesthesiologist. In case the patient wants a little more sedation or a little less sedation, that can be fine-tuned. Then during the surgery, the only thing patients see is just, they say it's an interesting kaleidoscope of colors.
Wow.
And that's it. And literally, about five minutes later, the surgery's done.
And there's no bandages?
There's no bandage, there's no eye patch even. If you have an eye patch or cover over the eye, that's not the modern-day surgery that I do.
Wow.
So right after surgery, the eye looks normal. There's no patch or cover over the eye. And I expect you to be able to see the clock across the room within 10 minutes, even if you previously had inch-thick glasses.
Unbelievable. Quick people's reaction to this, the return of their sight has to be the most gratifying thing of your day.
Best part of my day is the day after surgery, where I see all the patients who've had the surgery from the day before, and they're thrilled.
Oh, of course.
I'm smiling from ear to ear, because the patients are smiling from ear to ear. We do one eye at a time. So we do one eye, and then a week or two later, we do the second eye.
I see.
And we can fine-tune this to exactly that patient's need. So whatever their need for the visions are, whether you need to have great razor-sharp distance vision, because you're a pilot, or let's say you're an avid reader and you want to be able to read without glasses, we fine-tune to that specific patient.
You know, for so many seniors, it's really a question of, "I want to see my grandchildren's photos again."
For sure.
Yeah.
And I think these days, with the modern-day surgery and the newer premium lenses, you can see it all.
Fantastic. How do you measure the correction that would be needed for this lens that replaces this cataract lens?
Very important question. We take very detailed measurements here in the clinic before the surgery. I specifically order a custom lens for each patient. It's not just off-the-shelf, the same lens for everyone. So the lens I'll order for you will correct your farsightedness, your little bit of astigmatism, your need for your reading perfectly. And so we do that for each eye. So it's custom done in advance of the surgery.
I see. Is it possible for a person to put this off too long that they really can put their vision at risk totally?
Well, the most important thing for patients to remember is, there's no rush to do surgery, but certainly, don't put it off forever. The best indication as whether or not you should have surgery is, your vision's not good enough for your activities. You say, "You know, I wish I could drive at night, but I can't. I wish I could read the newspaper better, but I can't." You should consider the surgery. If you're happy the way your current vision is, there's no rush to do it.
Right.
If you do put it off for a prolonged period of time, it can make the surgery more challenging and the recovery a little bit more difficult.
I see. And what is a normal recovery? You said vision returns in about 10 minutes, but post-operatively, what would a patient expect?
Well, like any surgery, it takes time to heal.
Right.
And the normal healing period is just a couple of weeks.
Wow.
Patients start to see right after the surgery, and the vision steadily improves over the next few weeks. And so patients are usually comfortable enough after one week to have surgery on the second eye. So even for my parents, I did this surgery about one week apart.
I see. Yeah, I can understand that. It's like, "Okay, let's see how you did, doctor."
Of course, some patients want that. And so even in the community, I've done surgery for a lot of my colleagues or their families, the other eye surgeons' families, they do the same, one eye now and one in about a week.
Well, on your screen right now, you will see how to contact Dr. Devgan. And this is important. As you know, there's a lot of information on the internet. Do you recommend patients inform themselves before they actually come to visit?
Yes, this is going to be one of the most important surgeries of your life. Spend the time and do some internet homework.
Right.
Do some reading. This book's a nice start. It's on Amazon, you can certainly get it.
Right. Cataract Surgery, so a patient's guide. So you can just Google this, put it right in. You're also all over YouTube, I understand.
Yeah, I have a lot of, well, my videos on YouTube are actually teaching videos. So I do a lot of teaching for other surgeons to explain how to do the more difficult cataract cases. But definitely, spend the time, do the research.
Okay, do people need to watch their diet before the surgery? Or they should be watching that anyway?
It's, everything is basically the same as normal. The surgery is no more difficult than a routine doctor's office visit.
I'll be darned. This is so, it's so amazing to me. My mother was born with one eye. So in my family, and for virtually all my life, vision and caring for the eye was always the highest priority. And now, I see, this has become routine.
It is routine, it is routine, but remember, it's maybe routine for some people, but for you as a patient, this is critical. This will change how you see. Make sure when you see your doctor, spend a half an hour, or even an hour, with the surgeon before surgery. Yes, the surgery can be only five minutes, but it needs to be a surgery that makes you happy as a patient.
Right, exactly. And don't be afraid to look up the qualifications of the person you're going to. I know when we were talking briefly before this interview got underway, I was just amazed, because all the places you mentioned, because all the places you mentioned where you studied and where you did your internship and now where you teach, I'm going, those are the best in the world. They are the best in the world.
Yeah, I'm very fortunate. I've even traveled to 44 countries to teach surgery or do charity surgery missions.
Outstanding.
So it's a fun thing, but most important, be comfortable, take your time, ask a lot of questions, and think before you act.
Well, that's good advice in any circumstance. For the caregivers or maybe a son or daughter who is concerned about their parents' vision, how do you broach this subject to mom or dad? Is this when you see them squinting at the newspaper or going, what happened on the television screen?
Exactly. So a good example is I had a patient very recently where the daughter brought him in and she says, I brought him in because he would complain that he couldn't see the scores on the TV if he likes to watch basketball. And he didn't want to have anything done, but then I actually showed him pictures of my mom surgery before and after and explained it'd be just five minutes and that he'd be able to watch the show again.
Wow. Motivation enough for many people. Outstanding. Doctor, thank you so much for taking time with us today. I feel better already. Thank you, one and all, for watching Aging Well in L.A. And I hope for those of you who may need this surgery, give it a second thought. A lot of highly technical and very personable help is available to you. We'll see you next time.
Bye now.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Thank you again. Thank you, Councilmember Perry. We're going to start the program now. Councilmembers should be in the session probably in the next five minutes. We were going to take a break, but we don't suggest you do if you want to keep your seats. There are a lot of people outside. And so I can't sing and tell the jokes, so I'm probably going to just let you talk amongst yourselves for the next five minutes and then we'll start our program. Thank you. Just have somebody save your seat if you want to take a break and come back in. There's a lot of people waiting outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, for being here. We are waiting for them from the council. We do not expect Mr. Labonde or Mr. Wesson, but Councilmembers Alakon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Zine, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. We're still awaiting a quorum of Councilmembers, Councilmembers Alakon, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Parks, Reyes, and Zine. I'm informed Mr. Rosendahl will be a half hour late as well as Mr. Labonde and Mr. Wesson being excused. So thank you, Mr. Weezer. We're at, thank you, Mr. Parks. We are now at five members. And we'll begin shortly. If I can ask folks to begin to take their seats, we'll be starting the meeting shortly. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 5th, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome members of the public who are here and ask them if they can begin to take their seats. We're going to bring the meeting to order shortly. If I can ask folks to take their seats and welcome all of our guests that are here today in council chambers, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings live throughout the city's cable system. We also can, you also, excuse me, can follow the council through three other ways. One is through the internet. If you go to lacity.org, that's www.lacity.org, you can listen to the council meetings through webcast and also see any of our archived footage of our past council meetings. Also, there online as well are our agendas, which are made available three days in advance and posted in city buildings, one day in advance for our special meeting items. And we also have all the supporting materials for any items that are to have a vote. Those are also put before us here and are available for the public online at lacity.org. You also can follow us through your telephone if you're not close to a computer or television on the cable system by calling the following number. It's 213-621-CITY. It's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into council meetings through our service called Council Phone. You can also listen into our committee meetings as well. We have speaker cards in the back for anybody who wishes to be heard. We also can be followed remotely in San Pedro and Van Nuys if that's closer to where you live. You can always save yourself some traffic and reduce some pollution as well and not only listen to the council meetings, but testify remotely from our San Pedro and Van Nuys City Hall. So avail yourself of that convenience if you need it. We do have right now eight members of our council. We require 10 or two thirds of our usually 15, now 14 member body to constitute a quorum. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin that. I want to thank those members who are here on time. Councilmembers Alakon, Cardenas, Weezer, Corretts, Parks, Perry, Reyes, and Zine. Mr. Wesson and Mr. Labonde are excused today and told Mr. Rosendahl will be coming a half hour late, so we're waiting Mr. Englander and Mr. Krikorian to begin the meeting. As soon as we have one of them, we will begin. So if Mr. Englander and Mr. Krikorian will please come down as soon as possible. As I mentioned, there are speaker cards in the back. All items that are on today's agenda are split into sections for either items for which there has not yet been a public hearing and those for which public hearings have already been held. For those in which we have a public hearing in committee, it requires a council member to reopen the hearing to get public testimony again. But any item that has not yet had a public hearing will be automatically triggered by a card from the public. So there's also a section of the meeting for general public comment, which is for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. So just put public comment in the upper right corner. We'd be happy to hear your comments during general public comment. With that, we're still just awaiting one more council member. And thank you. I know we have a number of guests who are here today and folks who are going to be testifying in our public comment period. We're waiting Councilmembers Englander and Krikorian and Reyes, if they will please make their way down. Englander, Krikorian, and Reyes. As soon as we have one more, that will constitute, I'm sorry, we need two of those, three to begin the meeting. So thank you for your patience. We will begin probably in the next minute or two. Thank you. I know we have more folks that can come in than we have capacity. So I think what we'll be doing in the meeting is we'll take some general public comment at the beginning. We do have an item that is agendized today with special presentation with guests that are here from the chamber, and then we'll come back to public comment after that. So we'll try to space in a little bit of both in order to accommodate all our guests that are here today in council chambers. So we'll start as soon as we have quorum and Councilmembers Englander, Krikorian, and Reyes arrive, we will then be able to take up a special item out of order and then we'll come back to any public comment that we're unable to get because of the capacity crowd today. Thank you for your understanding. Now with the rain, we've had some tough traffic. Mr. Zine, you're on the road for two hours getting here, I know. We have Mr. Reyes is a block away and I know Mr. Krikorian is close by, Mr. Englander's coming by, so we know where each of the council members is. And as soon as we have two more, we'll begin the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Englander's here. That's nine members. We're still awaiting Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Reyes. Word is Mr. Reyes is in the parking lot. We will begin in just a minute. Mr. Reyes is here. If you could call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labonde, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present. And a quorum, Mr. President.
10, 14. Meeting is brought to order. We have first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves and Mr. Weezer seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Parks seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. We can run through today's agenda. Colleagues, any items you wish to call special on today's agenda? Now would be the time, if I can direct your attention to that. First item, please.
Mr. President, item one is an item noted for public hearing. It's a PCN in Council District 4. A motion is required. There has been a request from Council District 4 staff to continue this matter till Tuesday, October 11.
Okay. Without objection, we'll continue that till the 11th. Next items, please.
Items 2 through 23 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 2 may be referred back to the Budget and Finance Committee and as much as it was continued during the committee's consideration of this matter on Monday, October 3rd.
Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to continue item 4 for 30 days.
Okay. That would be to November...
November 4th.
Fourth? Without objection? Okay. Yes, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry?
On number 17, I'd like to just make a verbal amendment, receive and file recommendation number one, and then approve budget and finance report as amended.
Okay. Without objection? Go ahead and move that. Ms. Perry?
17 to note and file.
Okay. Move to note and file, item 17, for Ms. Perry. Any other specials, colleagues?
That's on recommendation one.
Sorry?
That note and file is on recommendation one.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. Ms. Perry moved to note and file the entire?
Yeah, but there's an instruction on, that's recommendation.
Oh, so it's already in there? You're saying it's redundant?
Yeah, we need them to do.
Okay. I think it's already in there, Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks are saying, so we don't need to move that. Okay. Any other special items, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take up.
Mr. President, pardon me, again, getting back to item number two, that item may be referred back to the Budget and Finance Committee if you'd wish.
Yes, let's keep that consistent. We'll move that back to Budget and Finance.
And also, in regards to items five through eight, there has been a request to continue those items till this next Tuesday, October 11.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing those to 11? Seeing none, those will be continued. And any of the items that have been agendized for closed session? Mr. Parks, you're...
Recommend that all of them should go to closed session with the exception of 33 should be in open session.
Including the nine through 17, the liens for unpaid taxes?
No, all those should go on open session.
In open session? Okay. We'll keep those open if nobody wishes to call those into closed session. Let's go ahead and please take the balance up. We can open up the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 24 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection in consideration, those are before us. Let's hold the ordinances. We also have a card, I believe, on 24. We'll hold all the ordinances till we have 12 members. We also have cards on 29 and 30. So let's go to the next items, please. Closed session items, 31 through 35. And Mr. Parks, again, your guidance was to take 31 through 35 was to take them in open session or to?
No, the 31 through 35 closed session with the exception of 33 should be in open.
Let's go ahead if nobody else wishes to... Yep. And I'll call 30 special. We have that special for cards as well. 33, if we can go through that settlement, Mr. City Attorney or Mr. Clerk?
Very good, sir. There is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled Robert Pettit and Claudia Pettit versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $247,500.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay. That is approved. All right, we will next go to our general public comment, then take out of order. We're going to do the first 10 minutes of general public comment. We will then return to public comment after we take up item 30. So don't worry if you're not heard in the first 10 minutes. We're going to return to that after taking up item 30 and then we will come back. Our first speaker is John Walsh. We have a clock to help you guide your time. Yeah, Mr. Parks? 29? Okay, 29 fourth with without objection. Okay. All right. I think because of the group that has, John Walsh, if you come up, we're going to actually have your public comment, then we'll go to the item at hand.
Make that two minutes, two minutes 36 seconds. They've already taken 24 seconds away. I'm not scared, it is. All we are saying is give peace a chance. Talk about Daniels and the lines then. Everybody out here, 90% are Chamber of Commerce. 99% of these people are the 1%. And the 1% here is the 99% in America. The mayor was here, he checked out. This is the Battle of Los Angeles. I finally got reinforcements. I've been here for 15 years. We've got reinforcements, we've got tents. We are ready to take over with nonviolence. And I'm telling you right now, it's peace versus profits. Peace versus profits. Now, the LA Times calls me a gadfly. They're right. We are insects, but we are scorpions. I just want to take a poll here. How many Chamber of Commerce members raise your hand if you are a member of Occupy LA? Not a single one. Not one traitor to the profit motive. Not one traitor. You can't stop us. Now, most of the members out here don't remember People's Park. I was at People's Park. And they printed me in the front page of the newspaper and my address for being beaten up at People's Park. And we're glad that after four decades, the young people have come back, they've come back with their computers, they're circling you old graybeards, and we are going to win. Come to my website, Walsh Confidential. All we are saying, all we are saying is give peace a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for your public comment. We're going to hold on the public comment. Actually, it was at 10:20 that I know the main group was going to be leaving, so I want to keep their schedule on track and that will allow us to have more people to be able to come in and to give public testimony. So we'll take item 30 out of order and then we'll come back to the rest of general public comment. Thank you to everybody for your patience as we do that. And while we have 12 members, just before we take up item 30, let's go ahead and take up the ordinances with the exception of 24, which we have a card on. So 25 through 28, since we require 12 members to pass an ordinance on the first reading. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
25 through 28 are passed. We'll take up item 30. Like to invite Gary Tobin forward from the Chamber of Commerce. Item 30, colleagues, is part of our access City Hall. We have many folks from throughout Los Angeles who have taken time out of their day, many for the first time, which is exciting to see people here in City Hall for the first time. And we had some greetings from the mayor and myself and the Controller, City Attorney. And we had some greetings from the mayor and myself and the Controller, City Attorney and our President Pro Tem earlier. But they have a report that they are presenting to us today on economic development and it's council district by council district. And let me just say on behalf of the council, we thank you for the time that you put into this, the study that you have done and the work that helps us dig down into our individual communities to see what our employment picture is like, to see what some of our individual tax receipts are like and building permits. It helps us frame, I think for all of us, the work that we do here as well as the legislative agenda which you have attached, which you come each year with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe or to Gary Tobin? All right?
Thank you, President Garcetti and members of the City Council. On behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, we extend our sincere appreciation for having us here in council today during our access City Hall to discuss what is on everyone's mind in this city, jobs and the economy. As you all know, more than one out of eight of the citizens that you represent and we represent are unemployed and many more than that number are underemployed. Our social service agencies feel it, so do the city tax coffers. No priority is higher today. I was delighted today to have to walk around the filming trucks that are outside City Hall. You have done some good work the last two days in making filming easier in Los Angeles. Thank you very much. I was also delighted to hear the discussion of the local preference ordinance this morning. Thank you for that. We support and appreciate your efforts on recent projects like Wilshire Grand and Farmer's Field. And we're encouraged that in this economic climate, other projects are being proposed as well. We appreciate your willingness to take a hard look at the negative impact of the city's grocery receipts tax on business and job creation. We're committed to working with you to develop the best and most effective way of eliminating the grocery receipts tax. The Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce is much more than an organization that promotes business-friendly policies. The LA Chamber is at the forefront of some of the most important social issues in our region, including education, workforce development and homelessness. We want to dethrone Los Angeles as the homeless capital of our nation through the Home for Good Collaborative that we have with United Way of Greater Los Angeles. I'd like to introduce to you the people sitting before you this morning. Joe Chizik, who's chairman and CEO of Mercury Air Group, and Joe is the 2011 Chair of the Chamber Board. And I take in Bill's district. Sitting next to me is the newest member of the Chamber staff, P. Anthony Thomas, who's our Vice President of Public Policy. Some of you might remember Anthony from working at City Hall here under Mayor Reardon and also from his days at the state legislature with the California Forestry Association. And we have Karen Hathaway. On my left, Karen is President and Managing Partner of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, one of our city's oldest organization and a founding member of the LA Chamber of Commerce in 1888. Karen will chair our board next year. And on the far left is Jim Herr, who's Senior Manager for the California Region for Global Corporate Citizenship with the Boeing Company. And Jim is the co-chair of our Education and Workforce Development Policy Committee. And I will introduce Brad Kemp in a minute, but let me turn it over to Joe Chizik to begin the discussion of the eight policy issues, priority issues that you have in front of you.
Thank you, council members, especially those that gave me the big applause. As Chair of the Board, I'm pleased to be here with my colleagues to discuss the priorities that the Chamber is recommending to you for this coming year. First and foremost, make business growth and job creation the number one priority. Aggressively extend the welcome mat to new and existing businesses that wish to invest in your district and our great city. The economic boom preceding our current unemployment crisis was due in large part to new construction. Focus resources on departments that have the potential to generate new revenue and jobs for the city. Number two, implement a plan to phase out the gross receipts tax. The City of Los Angeles has the highest business tax of any city in LA County and one of the highest in our nation. Based on a comprehensive economic study by Dr. Charles Svensson, even the second version, the Business Tax Advisory Committee recommended a plan to phase in the elimination of the gross receipts tax. Svensson's study said the city should potentially create 130,583 new jobs and generate more revenue than the current gross receipts tax. Now, our new Vice President of Public Policy, Anthony Thomas, will continue.
And thank you, Joe. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Let me first say that not only is it a pleasure, but it is an honor to be working for my hometown council, excuse my hometown chamber and representing my chamber at my local council. I know many of you from my work in the legislature for the past seven years and also with former Mayor Richard Reardon. I am looking forward to not only reconnecting with you, but members of your staff. As we continue with our priorities, there are two major economic engines that we have in our city. The Port of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles International Airport. First of all, the Port of Los Angeles. It is vital that we make sure that the Port of Los Angeles can compete with the widened Panama Canal. The Port of Los Angeles is the nation's leading container port, responsible for hundreds of thousands of jobs and billions and billions in tax revenue. By aggressively supporting project designed to increase the port's competitiveness, the council, this council, can ensure that the seaport is ready to meet the challenge of the Panama Canal expansion in 2014. Members, we must modernize and green the port by updating terminals, developing near dock rail facilities and relieving congestion on our goods moving corridors. Let's make our port the finest port in the nation. As we proceed supporting the LAX Modernization Plan, as many of you know, LAX is a $60 billion annual economic engine for our region and supports tens of thousands of jobs. The Chamber applauds the recent progress to modernize the South Airfield, expand the Tom Bradley Terminal and to provide a facelift to outdated terminals for a better passenger experience. There is a pressing need to do more, including metro services to the airport, a consolidated rail, a consolidated rental car facility and reconfiguration of the two northern runways for greater passenger safety and of course to accommodate the next generation of a larger, cleaner and quieter aircraft. These are economic benefits and economic benefits we cannot afford for it to slip through our hands. With that, let me pass along to our 2012 Chair, Ms. Karen Hathaway.
Thank you, Anthony, and good morning, council members. As you know, the Chamber approached the City Council to create the Office for Economic Analysis and now we have to work to permanently fund this Office of Economic Analysis. The 2011 launch of the Office, funded with a quarter of a million dollars from Council President Eric Garcetti's office, is an example of how the City Council can sharpen its focus on creating jobs for our residents. Reliable economic analysis on proposed city ordinances will give council members a better understanding of the economic impact of proposed legislation on jobs and businesses. The next thing we need to do is to utilize public-private partnerships to enhance city assets and to reduce the budget deficit. The city's current fiscal condition has created the need to implement long and short-term operational changes. Some city assets are best managed through public-private partnerships. This is done in every major US city, including our own. The Los Angeles County Museum of Art and the Hollywood Bowl are excellent examples of how community assets are managed in partnership with private or nonprofit entities. Learning from these successes will enable our city's assets, such as the Los Angeles Zoo, to live up to its full potential. And now, Jim Herr will take a few moments to talk about our priorities on education and workforce development and our work in chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles.
Good morning and thank you. The success of our city is dependent upon the success of our schools and also on the quality of the workforce we have here. Through the city's involvement with the LA Compact, we encourage you to better integrate city services such as school safety, the city's gang reduction zones and other programs on gang prevention with the LAUSD. We also encourage continued support for summer youth employment opportunities through Higher LA's Youth and also to support proven strategies for increasing college access, such as the region's Cash for College program. In late 2010, the LA Chamber and the United Way of Greater Los Angeles released Home for Good, an action plan to end chronic and veteran homelessness in Los Angeles by the year 2016. Since its launch, Home for Good has inspired a cooperative alliance between federal and local officials, a landmark shift in county resources and the establishment of a funders collaborative to leverage public and private funds for homeless housing for the maximum results. We ask City Council members to sign on to Home for Good to support the creation of permanent supportive housing in the region and to align the city resources with the Home for Good Funders Collaborative. Now I'll turn it back over to Gary.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you to all of you for your reports. Now, we would like to turn to the booklet which you have here, which is the Los Angeles City Council District's 2011 Economic Report. And I would like to, we're pleased to work with Beacon Economics on the 2011 report. Brad Kemp, who's Vice President with Beacon, will be making the presentation today. We'd especially like to thank the Southern California Gas Company and Urban Keith for sponsoring this year's report. Yesterday, we emailed each of your offices an electronic copy of the report and you have a hard copy in front of you. Brad Kemp, please talk about this report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I want to thank the President and the City Council again for, and certainly the Chamber for giving us the opportunity to bring some economic insight to the City of Los Angeles and more specifically to each of the City Council districts. We're very excited. We think that there's some positive news in this year's story that everybody's going to be excited to hear, but that opportunity of growth hasn't really been equal across the city and we'll talk about that to some degree. The data points included in this report were employment again, so we're going to look at those areas that have high concentrations of employment and how that's changed over time, sales tax, gross receipts tax, which we would be happy to drop out of this report for next year's report, and permit values as well. Obviously, a strong indicator of what direction we're going to watch the real estate market move over the next year. The outline of the report, just to give you a general sense, at the beginning, you're going to find Los Angeles city-level data, an ability to look at what's going on in the city and what's changed in terms of those four variables. As we move past that LA section that does include areas of ranking for each City Council District, there is a section for each City Council District. We invite obviously any of you to contact us if you have any questions about the data that's provided here. Before I go into explaining the data, I want to say very clearly, some districts have grown, some districts have not. That is not a reflection on any efforts being done in those local areas, but more a reflection of the industrial mix, the demographic mix, all the things that make up an area and make it unique. So please, if I talk about an area that may be still losing jobs, it's not a reflection on anybody in the area. It's something to be aware of and something we can hopefully do something about. Please, I refer you all to page seven in the book, just six and seven, just as a summary as well as some charts and graphs on the city. But more specifically, as I start to talk, I'd like to have you move to page eight. I'm going to move through eight, nine, 10, 11 relative to the data points in there. So on page eight, we look at the employment data for the city. And what I see that's really important is to understand for the first time since 2007 and a year-over-term, LA has gained jobs, 2009 into 2010. Now, this is only a 1% job growth, but still 1% job growth is much better than the 4.2% decline we saw in the previous year. So we're moving in the right direction. Now, that 1% job growth relates to LA County only grew by 0.4%. So the fact is, is that Los Angeles City is leading the county in terms of job growth relative to the total county numbers. California only grew by 0.2% during that period and although I will say San Jose grew by 1.1% during that period, shouldn't be surprising. A lot of the demand out of the business community is in the software realm and that's why that area is doing particularly well. As I said, last year when we reported this from 2008 to 2009 data, 14 districts had declined in terms of jobs. This year, 10 districts saw job growth while five continued to decline. So we're moving in the right direction and we certainly expect that in next year's report, we'll see more and more of those districts, if not all, going into positive job growth in the next report. District 15 saw the largest gain, growing by 10.6%. Now, it's not surprising, District 15 being the port area, took a pretty hard hit during the recession, has some room to come back, so it shouldn't be surprising there. District eight, Mr. Parks, should be very proud of the fact that his district saw the second-largest gain at 9.1%. And this district's employment never dipped during the recession at all, the only district that actually saw those kind of numbers. Again, District one posted the largest decline, losing 2.8%, but, and it was the only district that actually got worse over the year. So there's still something going on in that district, something that obviously Mr. Reyes should be aware of and how do we do something about that? I would ask you then to look at the bottom of page eight. I'm not going to refer to that, but this is where we rank each of the districts by total jobs, job growth and average wage. So it gives you a good sense of where the district stands up amongst the other districts in the city. On page nine, we're going to go over and talk about building permits. 2011 is on pace to be a better year than 2010. So we do have 2011 data up through June, just the first half. In 2010, we had a total of 1.5 billion in building permits of value. 2011, we already have 912 million. So we're on pace to outpace last year by a considerable amount. Apartment permits are the big gainer right now. And in fact, in 2011, over one-third of all permits are related to building apartments. Again, not a surprising fact, given that the housing bubble, the burst, all the foreclosures that have happened, the demand for multifamily housing is relatively high and there is a demand for more affordable, more apartment living, multifamily living in Los Angeles. So that trend should go for a while. Districts three, five and four are the biggest in the apartment permitting for 2011. There's no guarantee that these permits will result in building right away. It does take some time to put that through the process, but obviously for the sake of the economy, the faster we can move those projects through, the better for the economy overall. District 11 was the biggest in 2010, but is a little off pace in 2011. It's not quite doing what it did last year. District five is actually the biggest in the year so far and actually has more permits this year, has more permits this year than last year already in the first half of the year. So pretty good numbers for that area as well. We move to page 10 under gross receipts. Despite the fact that 12 districts continued to decline in terms of gross receipts, total gross receipts increased in 2010 by 0.4%. It's actually three districts, eight, nine and 13, offset the drops in the 12 that declined. In fact, it was District nine accounted, District nine accounts for 62% of the total and grew by 3.9%. In terms of gross receipts tax, it is the major engine in the City of Los Angeles. Both districts two and 14 decreased by 18.2% over the year, something to be looked at. Again, I would say that in the table below that, you want to look at some of the top sectors, yeah, on the page 10, I apologize, you're going to see some of the top sectors for each of the districts and how they've been doing. One of the things that stood out in District one, the information sector grew by 3,700%. Now, given the, where they were in 2009 at 0.2, that increase isn't surprising. It was real slow growth in previous years. Now on to page 11, sales tax. Sales tax receipts increased by 4.3% in 2000, from the 2009-10 to the 2010-11 fiscal year. 14 districts posted increases in fiscal year 10-11. Only District 14 saw decreases, negative 6.4% overall, but it's still improved from the previous year. So every area improved, it's just that district that hasn't turned the corner yet, but will. District seven had the largest growth, up 9.1%. And actually, the range of districts was 0.7% to 9.1%. The west side of the city, Districts five and 11, generated nearly 24% of the total taxable sales in the area. So while the downtown district is certainly the gross receipts capital, the west side is certainly the taxable sales capital. Now to the table below, I just want to say that fuel and service stations were the largest increase in terms of taxable sales by a considerable amount, 13% growth. That shouldn't be surprising, given the increase in gas prices during the time, that really accounted for the growth in that, the majority of that growth. Only building and construction decreased by 3.1%. That's not a surprise, given the housing market continues to languish. Overall, the conditions in Los Angeles County have clearly gotten better, but that improvement has not been felt equally across the city and across the City Council districts and industry sectors. We still have a long way to go before we get back to pre-recession levels, but the positive, the trend has turned positive, certainly evidenced by last year's report into this year's report. We're very happy to have the opportunity to present that. But after a period of long, a slight growth is, sorry, growth in the city is lukewarm at best, but after a long period of decline, a slight growth is a welcome change. We still have a long way to go before we get back to pre-recession. I thank you very much. I thank you very much.
We'll be happy to take any questions if members of the council have questions.
Colleagues, any questions? The Q does not visit Rosendahl.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you very much for coming and giving us the presentation and having an optimistic look in the midst of what seems to be a rather gloomy economic forecast throughout this great country. I represent, as you know, CD 11, which includes the airport, and have been active on the committee that oversees the port. What I'd like to ask you is, I'm worried about the port and the competition from the Gulf and from the East Coast. We are working as vigorously as we can to deepen it so that we can keep that. We had a commissioner here that has good contacts over there, and they're already starting to work it. Is there anything in particular advice you could give us about how we can keep that port the way it is and continue to keep it thriving?
Yes, your support for channel deepening was very important. There are about seven construction projects going on right now, which are very important. You just saw an EIR from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad for their near-dock facility, which would be four miles from the port, rather than their current facility, which is 20 miles from the port. In a couple of months, you're going to see a proposal from the Union Pacific Railroad to make some similar improvements in their operation. As you look at each of these, I would ask you to encourage all the port staff and the port commissioners to aggressively move these forward, because these are the kind of projects that will allow us to compete with Panama and other ports after the Panama Canal is white.
Yeah, and thank you for that. The LAX, of course, is right there with me, day-to-day, day-to-day, and I'm very pleased with the modernization that's taking place. The Tom Bradley Terminal will be $1.5 billion when it's done. The goal is 121212. But the more we modernize it, the more the gateway to America becomes more attractive to everybody. It is the number-one destination airport in the world. Is there any additional suggestions and advice about how we can continue to work closely with modernizing the airport?
Thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. Can I call you Bill?
You sure can. You're my constituent, and I'm your servant.
Bill, I think that your support of the modernization of particularly the international terminals is great. It's time that we brought it into the 21st century. There is, though, among the airlines who are the ones that do decide what ports they're going to be -- what airports they're going to be flying into, particularly since the new generation of aircraft do not have to stop at a west coast airport. They can continue on to places like Las Vegas and Denver, Chicago, New York. I think it's important that we continue to reflect to them that we are as safety-minded as any other airport on a stage-five basis, stage-five type of aircraft. And of course, that brings up the point that we need to look at the north runway complex and need to do something about that for better separation, safer of larger aircraft. And we hope that we can get your support, as well as the other council member's support, when that issue does come up again.
I look forward to that discussion. My last comment is about fast-forward, 3010, when Chairman of the Transportation Committee, Micah, came, a Republican. He said to me, "Bill, my wife always asks, 'Why isn't there a train into the airport?'" Well, we see the Crenshaw Line moving, we see the Green Line moving, but the 2012, the whole business of 12 projects over the next 10 years. Do you have any sense about the federal government supporting our mayor and his leadership and your leadership and giving us this infrastructure bank or some kind of a lending mechanism? I know Senator Boxer got a half a billion quickly for the Crenshaw Line to go. Are you optimistic we'll get the federal support? Even though they don't work together among themselves on issues, they seem to be all united on this particular issue.
Yes, we are optimistic, both of them. The House has dramatically changed their position over the last month. For a while, they said they were going to restrict their funding to revenue collected from the gasoline tax. Now they're open to other sources of funding and other sources of revenue. The TFIAP program, which is essentially America Fast Forward, the proposal is to increase that funding by tenfold. We are making progress. The mayor has put together a coalition of 130 mayors. We've put together a coalition of about 45 chambers of commerce around the country, all of which communicating with members of Congress.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Garcetti. First, I want to thank you for bringing up the Panama Canal. That's a very important issue. Working with Executive Director Skag Hassan Ikada, along with Wally Baker with the Beat the Panama Canal campaign, and in discussion with Council President Eric Garcetti, we do want to put some time for a presentation in how we start coordinating here in the council chamber with my colleagues, working on a date, and speaking with Mr. John Fettis, Speaker of the Assembly. He's also agreed to be present for this discussion. My question to you really is about looking at the regional issue. The port is but one phase of this challenge to be much more appealing in the international trade, but we also need cooperation from other cities that have pivotal points as we move trades and goods through the region, other smaller cities, other counties. My question to you is, do we have that level of dialogue with other regional entities, other chambers, that could see the reason why we need to perform on a regional level?
I think we certainly do. There were more than 1,000 people at the Mobility 21 Conference about three weeks ago, and from seven counties, all of which depend on the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach. Yes, we do have that. Where we end up in battles is that sometimes the number of trains or the number of trucks that are coming from the port cause congestion in other areas, and they feel some of that pain, just like we do in Los Angeles, and then they ask for some of that traffic to stop, and that traffic is essential to the growth of the ports.
And you bring up a very delicate issue, and that is how we work hand-in-hand with environmental advocates in dealing with some of the key concerns and how these projects are being mitigated and how we look at moving forward. I know the mayor's office is working with a very -- can I put this -- sensitive dialogue with key figures in that realm of the world, if you will. But I think we are, one, when it comes to region, we are talking about jobs, we are talking about environmental issues, and we need to get to that balancing point, the common ground that allows us to move forward and compete. Because you're right, in two or three years, it'll be too late. Now is the time to be able to express to other countries that are going to be assessing Louisiana, the Northeast. They already have the infrastructure being built out so that the ships can go right into those ports and bypass California altogether. You have a whole -- I think $6 billion was invested within the Louisiana area alone, let alone talking about what's going on in Northeast. So we're rather behind, I believe, by about two or three years. If we can move these projects, we can generate these jobs and look at how we continue stimulating this regional power that we currently are able to claim. And I'll push my button again, because I want to speak to the land use and some of the air rights in terms of how we posture ourselves and investment for the eventual upswing, but I'll push my button again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Yes, I just wanted to ask a number -- ask a question about how to interpret the numbers on page 28 on building and construction, because anecdotally, I think that downtown has been one of the more active areas for building and construction, and the number from 2009 to 2010 and 2010 to 2011 remains unchanged, and yet we've had a fair amount of new construction taking place. So I was wondering if you were basing that analysis on construction that is in the pipeline or construction that had been entitled or everything?
In fact, it doesn't actually say that construction's being done at all. It implies that this indicates a trend of where builders are thinking about it, where they're putting their -- their planning towards, but that doesn't mean that the projects have actually started.
Okay. So they may or may not occur.
That's based on --
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had is, what is the level of engagement with the Chamber and the various consulates represented from around the world in terms of having discussion regarding inbound investment and outbound opportunities that we might have to offer to them?
Ask that question again one more time.
I said, what is the level of -- how engaged has the Chamber been with the various consulates from countries all over the world here in Los Angeles? We have great representation of a number of countries here for not only inbound investment here, because, as you know, we do a lot of work with people from other countries who want to build and develop here, and what's the nature of that relationship in terms of inbound investment and also outbound, what we have to offer to them?
Yes. Well, we have at least one group from foreign countries come to our office every week. Two weeks ago, we had the ambassadors from Peru, Chile, and Brazil. Two days ago, we had Bahrain. We've had Korea last week. They come regularly. Now, LAEDC is engaged in trying to get those companies to invest here. We're very much engaged in promoting trade between our businesses and the businesses from the other countries. It's very important. This, the economic recovery, those areas that have economic recovery today are being led by exports.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacon. Mr. Alacon? You're on the list to speak? Was that a mistake? Okay. Mr. Parks?
I can say something.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like you to walk me through on page eight, so I'll understand those numbers. One of the things is that it seems somewhat counterintuitive as you go through the list, that if I understand it, are we to assume that there are only 45,000 jobs in the eighth district of the 250,000 residents, or?
No. Again, there -- don't correlate employment and population.
Okay.
I mean, the fact is, is that you -- that is, you are correct. That's how many jobs are actually located in your district. The majority of your residents that have jobs obviously go outside the area to work.
Jobs located in the district as opposed to people that are working that live in the district?
Correct. If we were talking about an unemployment rate, then we would be talking about the employment status of your residents. What we're talking about is industry employment.
Okay. The other one is, on the very tail end, we are low in the city on number of firms.
Yes, sir.
And we use firms, I'm assuming that's businesses.
Yes, sir.
But we show we're second highest in the number of the average size, which is somewhat counterintuitive, because most of the businesses we're aware do not average or do not hire 28 people. They're so -- they're mom and pops, and so we're just looking to see how that correlates.
Average firm size in -- I'm trying to see here, just eight.
So we're second in the city on the average size.
That's correct.
But we're lowest in the city on the number of firms, and--
And that's correct. So you're -- if you're the lowest in the number of firms, it's going to mean that you're going to have a higher number of average number of workers per business. So that means that the size of the businesses in your area are considerable. But again, it's not -- you don't have a huge employment base within the district.
Okay. Because one of the things, maybe we just missed some of these, because if you just anecdotally went through the community, it'd be difficult to find businesses that have 28 employees. I mean, that's one of the things.
This is based on exactly per -- this is based on data directly from the Employment Development Department, based on the businesses that have filed the DE1 with the Employment Development Department. So you may be having a hard time finding them, but they're there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here and for your report, which, as every year, it's very helpful to have usable data about where we are in our local economy and in a otherwise pretty bleak picture, both here and nationally. There is some little bit of optimistic news here about jobs creation, and that's good. I want to thank you, too, for including in your report a discussion about the need for continuing to work to develop our education system and youth development and have the city work more closely with the school district in both of those regards, because while it's important to talk about tax reform, it's also important that the business community stands, as I know that you do, stands hand-in-hand with the working people of America in demanding that we have an education system that works, both here in California and nationally. Because without that, we won't have the workforce for the 21st century. We will never be able to be competitive in the industries that matter to this city. And so it's vital that we devote the resources necessary to provide a first-class education to young people in this city and in this state. One point on the tax issues that I did want to mention, and I want to thank you, Gary, for mentioning, right out of the box, the first thing you mentioned was film production. And we just got some more good news. Film LA reported that production is up 15% for the third quarter, which means lots more jobs for Southern Californians. And Film LA attributed that to the Film and Television Production Tax Incentive that I authored with others when I was in Sacramento. Right now, that production tax incentive, which has been so vitally important to sustaining the economy of Los Angeles, right now, that production tax incentive is in danger of expiring if the governor doesn't sign AB 1069 by Felipe Fuentes, which is sitting on his desk this very minute. So as long as all of the leaders of the business community are here, I want to remind you and urge you that today, you can make a difference in sustaining those jobs by letting the governor know how vitally important it is to extend this tax credit, and I know the Chamber has taken a leadership role in this. It's important that we make contact with the governor and let him know that it's essential to sign that bill so we extend the tax incentive for -- and keep it alive so that it can continue to succeed. Already, that incentive has created 20,000 jobs in California. It's meant $3.8 billion in economic activity, and we just can't afford, we can't allow that to expire. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I know it's been a while since I've owned my own business and provided jobs for 26 families, but I do want to understand better. One of the handouts that you gave Access LA City Hall, and on the left column, it says, "Elimination of the Gross Receipts Tax Could Generate $263 Million in Additional Revenue", et cetera. Could you clarify for us what you mean by additional revenue? We're collecting upwards of $400 million right now in that category, correct? So you're saying that the city will see that 400-some million come back, plus $263 million, to the city? Can you break that down for us?
That is the -- I don't have that study in front of me, but that's the study that the city contracted for with the USC professor, Dr. Svensson, who -- those numbers are from his report, and he said, "When that tax is phased out, the benefit is the potential creation of 130,000 jobs and the additional tax over and above that what you're collecting now." The real question for us is how long that takes to get to that point.
Yeah, it's a lag time. Like I said, I owned a business before, and if I would have abandoned my business model as a real estate broker and decided I want to go sell carpets, it's kind of hard for me to tell my wife and children, "We're going to stop eating for a while and stop paying bills until that income starts to regenerate." It's that gap that is really the consternation that causes policymakers like ourselves to be able to go ahead and make that change. But I'd also like to acknowledge this city council for its hard work. Shortly after I arrived on the council, then-council president Alex Padilla assigned me to be the chairman of the Business Tax Committee. And the main responsibility of that committee was to figure out, what are we going to do with our business tax? Can we overhaul it? And also, the objective was, can we reduce the business tax? We did reduce the business tax during my tenure as the chairman, and with the support of the unanimous support of the entire council, we did reduce it by upwards of $90 million. We did expect that there was going to be a lag time of about three years before we would see that revenue come back up, as just described by the PhD. Now, my point is, what we need to know now, back then, it was a different time. We did, in fact, have a more -- much more robust categories of incomes, so that we could miss some income in one category, the business tax, and then actually smooth things out without having to lay people off, reduce services, and everything worked out well because the elasticity effect, which is something all of us learned at that moment, was going to happen. It did happen. Back then, it's my understanding that we were collecting about $290 million. We expected to go down by 90, but it was going to come back up shortly, within three years. It did. Now we're upwards of $400 million. So that has happened in the past. What makes us think-- What makes us think in this economy, in this timeline, in this window of time, if we can actually see that similar rebound?
Well, those are the questions that we asked Dr. Svensson, and this was his report. But we also know that we've heard that from a number of members of the council, and we pledge to work with you to further research so that you feel comfortable with the answer to that question.
Counselor, I think there's been also some discussion about a phased approach, where it wouldn't just be, as you said, and giving in your analogy, where you went from your brokerage business into your carpet business. And that's what is being looked at right now, how that gets phased in. But the simple fact that it did occur once, and we came back up to where we are today, even despite this economy, I think is an indication that the exact same thing will happen. We're all very concerned about that middle ground, as you're concerned with. But we have to start at some point.
By the way, it was an analogy. I did go from the brokerage business to another business, and now I'm a public servant. But it wasn't carpets. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got three more speakers, and then just a reminder, we still have public comment. We've had folks very patient, I know, who've come in from out of the rain to speak for our general public comment. So we'll call on Councilmember Weezer for the first time, and then Councilmember Reyes and Perry for a second time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And the report indicates that compared to last year, the sales tax revenue has increased slightly. But I think what it doesn't capture is the leakage that we have to surrounding communities on the side of retail, where we have lost opportunities. I recently read a report how many of these large retailers, on average, are locating on areas surrounding our city limits. For example, in my district, 14th Council District, where I border Montebello, I have a, a lot of my constituents are going out to those areas to do their shopping for consumer goods because that's where the large retails are located. And I know the chamber has been very supportive of reforming our permitting system, and I know we've gained a lot of ground this last year to make that possible. I also think it's an issue of density. We have some older neighborhoods, very hard to find the amount of land that large retailers would need. But I think generally, that's another area. Aside from permitting, I think, what else can we do to continue to welcome the retailers that would love to be where the consumers are, but for one reason or another have to locate in local neighboring cities? And I'm not sure if any of you on this panel would have any thoughts on that.
Gary, can I at least, I want to support your position in the fact that taxable sales increased by 4.3% in Los Angeles City during the period. During that same period, Los Angeles Metropolitan Division, the entire county, grew by 6.1%. And so it does support your statement that there is a greater tax sales growth in surrounding areas outside of Los Angeles City. In fact, California grew by 8.4% during the same time, and San Jose by 11.9%. So we still have some room to go.
I would certainly encourage that you take a serious look at buildings that need to be redeveloped, strip centers that are past their prime age, and work with some of these major retailers to try to rehab those facilities. They're sitting there right now, not generating sales tax, not generating jobs, not providing any economic value, in fact, negative economic value to the neighborhood. And if, in fact, you could fill those with some of the retailers you're talking about, that would be a great investment in our community and benefit everyone.
Thank you. And as many of you know, I've been working on a bringing back Broadway initiative to revitalize the Broadway Quarter, and I won't name the retailer, but there's a retailer that will make an announcement soon to come back to Broadway. And the issue there was, how do our rules and regulations inhibit the use of historic sites for these retailers who would love to come to a historic area, but because of our rules and regulations make it easier? So it's not only an issue of expediting permits, but it's an issue of updating our rules and regulations so that we can make better use of these older buildings. And we want to preserve our history. We want to keep them safe, obviously, given the way we structured buildings in the past with modern state and federal rules. But at the same time, I think a review of how we could better update our rules and regulations to allow more of these large retailers to locate in historic buildings and older buildings, and not make as much of a hindrance, that's another avenue we could take as well. But that's certainly an area we need to look at more and see, and talk to the retailers themselves and see what has inhibited them from locating the city and doing more around the surrounding city limits.
We'd be delighted to work with you on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember. First, this is a very interesting dialogue, and one of the challenges we have as a city is how do we work cooperatively in addressing the needs and priorities of the chamber and the business sector? And one of them is having housing for the workers, housing for our labor force. We have people commuting from the Inland Empire, from Riverside. By the time they get here, they're tired, they're worried about their kids, a lot of losses in time, people leaving because of their sick, and all that good stuff. But we also look at how we generate this partnership. Let me give an example. The federal government acknowledged Los Angeles River as one of 10 programs under this umbrella called the Urban Waterways Initiative. It's a pilot program for an urban waterway. It brings in the EPA and HUD, an interesting partnership there, Environmental Protection Agency and Housing Urban Development Group. So now we're talking about how we redefine our space along corridors that are essentially eroding, they're stuck in the 1940s. These are travel patterns, land use patterns that fit old rail spurs that went into the neighborhoods to pick up products, but today are obsolete. And a good amount of the areas that you define in the report as being low in job generators also are very dense in housing, but also losing affordability because of the increase in real estate costs and everything else that we know about this economy. So my question to you really is about this Costa-Hawkins law in the state that prevents local municipalities from putting forth policy that requires affordable housing, from the private sector, when they want to take advantage of enhanced entitlements. I'm looking at a 660-acre site from Lincoln Heights, includes three rail stations, the cornfield, property east of Chinatown along the river. But my constituents ask me, Councilman, why are you doing this if what they're going to build is not for us? We're not going to afford to be there. Now I have to move out of my neighborhood here in the northeast, east side, be displaced, and travel two, three more hours to get to the job I had when I could have taken 10 minutes. But because of new investment, the housing industry and investors do not want to provide housing for the working force. So you have a legislator in the state who is not changing the Costa-Hawkins law that gives us more flexibility to create different levels of requirements in providing housing. Center City West, I have five, six structures, mega-structures, named after Italian royalty, and I have nothing against Italian royalty, but none of it is affordable for the people that live there. And it was a lawsuit we had to settle because of Costa-Hawkins. So I ask you, we want to create jobs. We want an environment that's friendly for investment, but how do we appeal to the business sector if we have no place for the workforce to live near their place? Excuse me, I'm struggling with a little cold here. So I don't want to end up on this negativity. It's more of a challenge. I think we have a glorious city. We have a waterway we call the River, 33 miles. We're redistricting the corridor. We've got 660 acres that will be reassessed, re-entitled. We're creating new categories, going up four to five stories. We're going to multiply the value of this land. But the big question is for whom? And does the chamber, does the private sector challenge the state legislator to change the Costa-Hawkins law so we can provide affordable housing? And that's, I'd like to just pose that question to you.
Well, Councilmember, we could talk about that subject for a long time, and as you know, it's one of the major challenges facing Los Angeles is the cost of housing and the fact that so many people cannot afford the cost of housing. I can't sit here and tell you that I have a solution to that, but I will tell you that we'll schedule a meeting with your office, and we'll talk about this more.
If you can bring some state legislators, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon?
I did press my button.
Correctly pressed this time.
This time I did press. First of all, let me thank you for your report. All of these kinds of analysis help in our decision-making. Quite frankly, our city staff is not equipped or capable because of the diminished resources to do all the analysis we would love to have before making all these decisions. But I did want to focus on the business tax. The elimination of the business tax is something that, as Chair of the Jobs and Business Development Committee, I had the responsibility to oversee for a little more than a year. And in fact, my last act as chairman of the committee was to introduce motion to direct the CAO and the CLA to work with BTAC to give us instructions as to how we would proceed with eliminating the business tax over the course of five to 10 years. The thing that I think Mr. Cardenas sort of talked about is, how do you balance the issues? The business tax, in fact, when I was looking at the statistics for my district, I'm very encouraged that we were number one in increasing sales tax. Well, I don't need a report to know that that's because we opened the Costco in Pacoima, and that had a tremendous stimulative effect on the economy for the 7th Council District, the Costco, Best Buy, and Lowe's, to be fair. And yet, it also showed that while we expanded jobs by a little more than 3%, the average wage went down in my district. And so I think it's important for us to know that as we consider, and as the mayor's candidates consider in their debates, the issue of eliminating business tax, that we do it in a way that's mindful of our needs to drive a consumer-driven economy. If we undermine the wage levels of our workers, then our economy is going to continue to deteriorate because they're not going to have the consumer buying power that we need to build quality of life throughout the city of Los Angeles, not just in a few areas. And so when we do eliminate the business tax, I want this council to be mindful of the notion of ensuring that we eliminate it for those businesses that are encouraging good wages, that they are providing good benefits to their workers so that we don't cause a diminution of our wage average. And Mr. Parks, of course, is concerned about the issues that Mr. Cardenas raised. If we eliminate it too quickly, we lose revenue that's going to undermine the services for the city of Los Angeles. At the same time, if we can do it in a way with triggers that ensure that we are actually generating more revenue, then that would be the way to proceed. And I think we can all agree on the principle. It's just a question of the details as to how we move forward. So I want to thank you for your report. I think the elimination of the business tax is going to be a central theme in the next mayor's debate. In fact, the next mayor, I believe, is going to eliminate the business tax. The question is not if, the question is how. And so I hope that we do it in a way that not only stimulates more business activity, but in fact, increases the average wage of the working people of Los Angeles, which should be as much a goal as anything else if we want consumerism to thrive in Los Angeles.
Gary, can I make your comment? Do you mind if I make a comment? I think that, you know, it's an excellent point, and what I think we have to understand is, is that it's the ratio between those retail jobs and other types of industries in our area that really determines the quality of life in that district. So if in your district, you're only focusing on retail to serve that residential population, it'll be very popular in terms of political move because it provides services, but it does bring down the quality of life over time in an area that obviously depends on other types of jobs.
Can I just, I just need to respond because it's not just in the retail versus manufacturing. Our manufacturing vacancy rate is 6%. The wages have dropped because we've gone from heavy manufacturing to light manufacturing, and the wages are just less in light manufacturing than they are. And this is a historical trend, I think it's about a 40-year-old trend, that is affecting the region. My district happens to be very significant in that regard because we have the rail corridor on San Fernando Road and the manufacturing industrial base. So we have to be careful. It's not just retail versus manufacturing. It's also to look at, how do we reignite heavy manufacturing, but even amongst light man, I know, I have the same problem. Biomed is one way to look at, how can you do light manufacturing that pays decent wages as opposed to undermining our economy with low wages throughout?
President Garcetti, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity today.
Absolutely. Ms. Perry actually has the last word. Do you want, Perry, real briefly?
And it's only fitting that I should have the last word. I wanted to ask you a question on page 10, under Council District 9. One of the strongest industries, and it continues to grow in an amazing way, by the week even, is the garment industry. And it is included in a large part of downtown Los Angeles, moving eastward and southward. And I wondered if any of those numbers, I don't think it would have been possible to classify that under professional services. It's really a manufacturing function, too. I mean, they do cutting and assemblage, and, you know, basically putting together garments in Los Angeles, even though the fabric may have been dyed somewhere else and the buttons may come from somewhere else. But there is some light assemblage going on here and some degree of manufacturing.
But you also have to remember that it's a design center as well, and design wouldn't be covered under manufacturing itself, and it would be, in many cases, under the professional business service sector. So it is spread out across, and I agree with you, it's the actual value, for example, in professional business services in your region that just generates the most value in terms of gross receipts. It's not a matter of, that's the most representative business in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
And the very last word, Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I apologize. I had a district matter. Give me one minute, what I missed today. Okay.
All of our meetings are available on the Internet, Mr. Labange.
I got that, but I was given a shot to hit it over the fence. The importance of commerce to the rise of the community, the importance of advocacy to the rise of the community. I'll read the report. I look at it. I'm dealing with the tourism challenge where it's so popular in Hollywood, they're coming into the front doors of everybody's home. That's a good thing to be, have tourists here, but we've got to balance it out. Thank you very much. I apologize for being late.
Mr. Englander.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you very much because not only is this information absolutely critically important and vital, but getting the word out on what we need to do to improve not just services, but business services specifically in the city of Los Angeles is so important. In looking at District 12 and what you put together, and this is fascinating, one of the things that isn't in here in the report that I wanted to mention, and I can't ever mention enough to get out there, is that we have the largest M-zone properties in the city of Los Angeles, light industrial, manufacturing, the jobs that we're trying to attract, good-paying jobs to the city of Los Angeles, and I will work and have, continue to work to fight to protect that zone. In fact, just recently, a couple of weeks ago, put in a new motion to allow back-office-type use in those zones that weren't allowed before because of those, those are the new technologies that are coming in with aerospace, bioengineering, green jobs, to allow those in those types of zones as well. And then just recently, in fact, moments ago, the council president and I co-authored a motion and introduced today to extend the business tax holiday another three years. So I wanted to thank you for the support in that, for the chamber's support in that, for bringing that forward. Joe, I appreciate all your help and the panel as well. So I appreciate and look forward to working with you to improve the city, the business climate in the city of L.A., and thank you very much for your time here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know you've got a packed morning, and thank you for the additional time here in council chambers. A pleasure. We'll make that report available for the public as well. We'll go back to our public comment. Again, thank you to folks who have been very patient as we took up that first item. It's in some ways a good backdrop to the economic woes that the city and that our country faces. And let's go ahead and take a vote on that, just before we take, accept that report. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
If I can ask folks to just kind of move their conversations to the side, and Clark Davis is our next speaker, very patient Clark Davis. Mark Lippman will follow after Mr. Davis, and then Mario Britto. Feel free, folks, if you want to line up to come forward, or you can wait till the next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Very good morning.
Thank you very much for taking the time to hear from us today. My name is Clark Davis. I'm a lifelong resident of Los Angeles, and I'm proud to call myself a Los Angelino. My father has been a professor at USC for 45 years. My mother was a teacher in South Central for 18. One of my brothers founded LAT Mentoring, an organization that supports disadvantaged use throughout the school district. My other brother is an architect who passionately designs buildings to help beautify Los Angeles and sits on the board of the Venice Canals Association. The resolution presented here today by Councilmen Allar- The resolution presented here today by Councilman Alarcon precisely describes why we are here today. I believe that the current situation that most Americans and residents of Los Angeles are experiencing today is untenable and unsustainable. As a member of the newly formed organization called Occupy Los Angeles, I am here today to suggest that we and you, as citizens, need to be on the right side of history. This is a chance, I believe, that we have and may not have again. I'm sorry. I believe that we have a chance and we may not have again. This movement is sweeping the country. It is nothing more than an attempt to restore the voice of the people, restore our dignity and pride that is rapidly eroding. I implore all of you to support this movement, and I can assure you that we have nothing but good intentions, and I think that I can safely say that as our movement grows, that the majority of the residents of Los Angeles will, with open arms, join with us to create a better future for all of us and our children. Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Thank you for your patience as well. Mark Lippman is our next speaker. After Mr. Lippman is Mario Britto, and then Cheryl Eickley.
Good morning and thank you.
Good morning.
In my individual capacity as a member of Occupy Los Angeles, I would like to express my gratitude to the City Council for the support you have shown us thus far, in solidarity with the growing movement we see across the country today. As there are so many problems with the system that we, the 99% of this population, live under, it is sure that no one solution can address or fix it all. To that, I would simply like to offer this poem as a step in the right direction. Who says it has to be like this? Tax the rich. With a debt ceiling falling in, tax the rich. And a national economy bottoming out, tax the rich. While the working class tightens its belt, tax the rich. The golfing class is getting fat, tax the rich. On subsidies for billionaires, tax the rich. And oil companies, tax the rich. Insurance companies rake it in, tax the rich. While health care ceases to exist, tax the rich. And education is being gutted, tax the rich. While unions and immigrants are being blamed, tax the rich. So that we can bail out the bankers, tax the rich. With corporate welfare, tax the rich. And global warfare, tax the rich. Capitalization doesn't work, tax the rich. For 99% of the population, tax the rich. The system is imploding, tax the rich. And the bombs they keep exploding, tax the rich. With bloodthirsty shrapnel of their greed, tax the rich. You can measure, the measure of austerity is a grave, tax the rich. No longer shall we be your slaves, tax the rich. You can hear the drums beating, tax the rich. It's on everybody's lips, tax the rich. And it's getting louder, tax the rich. All together now, tax the rich. And step forward into that brighter day. Thank you.
Mario Britto is our next speaker, then Cheryl Eickley, and then Ron Cabrera. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council members. And normally, I would say I'm from Lincoln Heights, Councilmember Reyes, but today I'd say I live on 200 North Spring Street. I am a resident of Occupy LA, and I'm here to talk about why we're here. The reality is, it's a sane reaction to an insane situation, where we have the extremely greedy, which is 1% of the population, only 99% of the nation's wealth, where the rest of us, the 99%ers, are trying to struggle by, we have families. It's ironic that you would think that today, when we have quote-unquote "city access" sponsored by corporations, one of those corporations is Semper Energy, who is actually attacking the utility workers' unions, right, they want to cut their pay. It's a city or state mandated or state-sponsored monopoly, allowed to have a monopoly over the utilities in Southern California, and at the same time, they want to attack those workers. Our movement is no longer just a movement of young people, as it never was, that's how people like to pigeonhole us. Our movement includes teachers, firefighters, hotel workers, service employee workers, janitors. It also includes religious communities, communities of color, community organizations. Our movement is going to seek to grow because we're trying to address an issue of democracy in this country. When a democracy cannot survive when you have such a disparity of wealth. We are patriots trying to save our country. Patriots are trying to save our country from ourselves. If we don't address these wealth inequalities, this country could collapse, and this economy could collapse. It is our responsibility to serve the most underrepresented communities. We are the 99%. Many of you might be the 99%, some of you believe you're not. I just want to end with just saying this. I'm a lifelong union member. My father was a steelworker who worked in a plant in Vernon that's no longer there. And this is the realities that we're living today, many of us.
Cheryl Eickley is our next speaker. After that is Ron Cabrera, and then Quasi Nikrumala.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I have two requests today. I would like the City Council to support a resolution that will be or has been introduced by Councilmember Alarcon, and I think also some amendments that will be coming from Councilmember Rosenthal. I also would like the City Council to help the citizens of Occupy Los Angeles to work with city officials so that we do not have to move to the sidewalk every night and then move back to the parks every morning. The media seems to play our movement as if we have no focus or no drive or no demands or no objectives. This resolution really does point out the issues that our citizens are concerned about, so the media can read this and see what it's all about. I am speaking on behalf of myself, and as a group, we make a consensus decision, so this is just from myself. In addition, I really like the part of the resolution that talks about the Constitution. I would like to read it fairly quickly. Whereas the causes and consequences of the economic crisis are eroding the very social contract upon which the Constitution that the United States of America was founded on, namely, the ability of Americans to come together and form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, and provide for the common defense of, promote the general welfare of, and secure the blessings of liberty for all, allowing every American to strive for and share in the prosperity of our nation through the cooperation and hard work. I really appreciate that part of it. And in addition to that, I don't know if you're aware, but this group of citizens, please raise your hand if you're with Occupy Los Angeles, so we can see who you are. This group of dedicated, concerned citizens, every night breaks down every single tent and moves it to the sidewalk because public parks in the city of Los Angeles close at 10:30, but we are legally allowed to sleep. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Cabrera is our next speaker. After that is Quasi Nikruma, and then Carol Frances Likkens.
Okay, I'm sorry about how I'm dressed, it's because I've been outside for five days now, and we're going to be out there for a lot longer. Also, I'm soaking wet, and that's why I'm shaking, it's not because I'm nervous. I really appreciate you guys' support. We have an economic disaster on our hands, and we are the canaries in the mine. We really would appreciate your support and your endorsement because you will be the first government in the country to support this movement. This is a movement of all races, all religions, all sexes. There's libertarians out there, there's Democrats out there, there's Republicans, because everybody is sick and tired of the game of politics. And there's some people here that I've met you before, you might not recognize me, I've advocated on behalf of community colleges for years, and we appreciate your continued support. And this is something that's near and dear to our heart. We would not come out here and dedicate our lives to this for the long haul unless this is serious. And this is something that's happening inside of all of us, this is history, and we just really appreciate your support, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Quasi Nikruma.
Thank you. As some of you know, I'm the co-coordinator of the Martin Luther King Coalition for Jobs, Justice and Peace. We've been working with the young activists who've launched Occupy LA because we think that they, like a lot of the rest of us, have a lot of legitimate concerns about the crisis that we face as a community, as a city, and as a nation. And we certainly would like to encourage our City Council to join with this citizen effort. As we said at the time, some discussions were going on here around the budget cuts. We think we need to reverse the trend in this country where our cities are being starved of resources. We think our elected officials need to join with the citizenry in a movement to get our economy turned around, to get national policy turned around, and to begin to really tackle the problems which frankly are much bigger than anything that's going on local. But we also have some local issues that we're concerned with, and hopefully, out of the citizen assemblies that are occurring in connection with this process, we can open a dialogue with the City Council directly about what our citizens feel should be implemented in terms of resolving particular problems that we all face. So thank you very much, and we hope that you will join us and get behind this.
Thank you. Carol Frances Likkens, and then Tim Ottman.
Hello, my name is Carol Frances Likkens. Thank you so much. I'm a resident of 200 North Spring Street, the fastest-growing in the last five days, the fastest-growing resident in Los Angeles. And I want to thank you and ask for your support for Councilman Alarcon's resolution, and also ask you to support the mayor's executive order to give us the use of the lawn. And you know, we're not out there sleeping on the sidewalk because it's the most comfortable place we could find in the city. We have homes, I'm from Koreatown. Also, I want to say that I'm a retired teacher for two and a half decades, teaching mostly in LAUSD in inner-city, almost all in inner-city, Compton and Watts. And, you know, you ask some of our students why they want an education, why they should want an education, most of them will say what they've always been told, so we can get a good job. But it's really hard to motivate kids when their parents and their aunts and uncles and friends don't have good jobs, so they know what that means, and there are fewer and fewer now. Or when their relatives who have gotten a good education and gotten a home are being foreclosed on. So as a former teacher, I am part of Occupation LA because these are our people, we are the 99%. And I want you to support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Ottman is our next speaker. After that is Dikran Jabejyan.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing, thank you for hearing our concerns. I'm born in Los Angeles, and I'm just an ordinary citizen, and I'm supporting the Occupy LA movement, and we would welcome your support with this possible resolution that may be passed, I hope. And I want to thank the police, they've been fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Dikran Jabejyan, then we'll hear from Gail Margolis on item 30 as well. Keep coming back. Is there a Dikran Jabejyan? Okay. As we voted on 30, we're going to be weaving these together. If we can put that before us, Madam Clerk, just to make sure, and Gail Margolis come in as we open the roll on reconsideration of 30. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. And thank you for your patience as well. We've got good cross-fertilization.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We had some cards that the chamber had submitted that unfortunately, a trainee took to the office, I think, by accident. Yeah, it was told to, but don't worry. Come on forward, and then Jenny Catlove will be afterward. Good morning, nice to see you.
Good morning, President and Councilmembers. I'm Gail Margolis, I'm the Vice President for Government Relations at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, and I also serve as the Chair of the Healthcare Council, the Committee of the Chamber. I'm thrilled to speak here today, attesting to the wonderful and collaborative relationship enjoyed by the city of Los Angeles, the LA Chamber, my hospital, and all of the other healthcare providers and the communities we serve. Beyond providing vital healthcare services to their communities, hospitals in California are economic engines that employ hundreds of thousands of people and purchase vast amounts of goods and services. The ripple effect of the nearly 500,000 hospital jobs in California equate to about a million jobs statewide. According to the American Hospital Association, we are the second-largest private sector employer in the nation, supporting scores of local businesses and communities everywhere. California hospitals spend more than $65 billion a year in the communities they serve. With the ripple effect, these accounts for a total contribution of $150 billion. However, hospitals and other healthcare settings face challenges. We need to attract and retain replacements for retiring workers. The older workforce is growing five times faster than the overall workforce. We need to expand the workforce to care for an aging population. The number of Medicare-eligible seniors will double by 2030. There will be significant changes ahead in the delivery of healthcare. Healthcare jobs will increasingly move to non-hospital settings, and newer technologies will be used. We need to train people so they can fill these jobs. Over the next 20 years, the state of California will need to train almost 1 million allied healthcare workers to meet the need, but the state university and community colleges will only have the capacity to train two out of three of these healthcare workers. Physician workforce will become younger, the nursing workforce is becoming older. In conclusion, our strength lies in continuing to work together across all the sectors to develop strategies to encourage workforce development, including innovative pipeline activities, expanding training, ensuring funding, and we are happy to continue to work with the Chamber and the City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gail, and thank you for what Children's Hospital does to save lives and to be involved with our job training programs for healthcare professionals. We very much appreciate it. Jenny Catlove, thank you for your patience as well. Then Noel Massey will be next.
Hi, my name is Jenny Catlove. I am with the Children's Partnership. We are a national nonprofit child advocacy organization based in the Los Angeles area, and we work on issues to improve the lives of underserved children, including all of Los Angeles area's children. And I'm here to talk to you about a project that we're working on with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce, and it kind of dovetails on Gail's presentation around workforce. One of the issues that we work on is dental care and access to dental care for underserved children. Dental care is, which is dental disease, is the number-one chronic condition nationally and in California. It surpasses asthma and diabetes and hay fever. Lack of dental care is a number-one issue that children face in California and in Los Angeles. As a result, a 2009 oral health assessment in Los Angeles County found that 81% of children needed dental care. Much of that dental care was needed within days. And the waiting time to see, to get dental care in Los Angeles area, in the clinics that serve underserved children, was, the average waiting time was up to seven weeks, and this was as high as 135 days, and I didn't do the math on the weeks there. So children simply aren't getting the dental care they need, and one reason is because we don't have the workforce to meet those needs. Healthcare reform is going to create an additional burden on our dental workforce system. We estimate that about 1.2 million additional children in California will obtain dental coverage when healthcare reform kicks in in 2014. And that means we're going to have more children demanding care. So we are working with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce on a project to look at innovative ways to bring dental care to underserved children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noel Massey is our next speaker, then Donovan Green.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to this council and this esteemed group. Noel Massey, president for UPS here in Los Angeles. We have about 7,000 employees here in the LA area. UPS, we move 7% of the GDP of this country, which is about $2 trillion, and we move 2% of the global GDP. Areas that we feel would serve the city of Los Angeles to stay focused on in this very tough time, because as you make tough decisions, these are things that we feel are very important, would be to stay focused on education. Improving the dropout rates in this city is absolutely critical to its future, which is why the LA Chamber is so focused on education, because it plays towards job readiness. A 60% dropout rate is an inhibitor to business growth, make no mistake about it. Roads and infrastructure support, that's been talked about. World-class infrastructure brings world-class companies. If the infrastructure is not good in the part... If the infrastructure is not good in the park, in the airports, companies will not come here. And that goes to a very key point. Oftentimes, oftentimes, a certain amount of hubris can seep into the process. One thing a business owner, when I leave here today, I'm going to see a business owner. His name is Robert Stroud. He built a print company. When he took it over, he had three people. Today, he employs 97 people in Los Angeles County. He has the choice to put that company anywhere he wants, because we can move the checks that he prints to anywhere he needs them moved. And if he feels that he's not getting support on taxes, like so many businesses are doing, they will leave. So it's very important that the decisions you make are non-toxic to the business community, and that's how you grow this economy. Thanks.
Thank you, Noel. Donovan Green is next. And is Ladonna DiCamello still? Okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Donovan Green. I'm a Director for External Affairs for AT&amp;T here in Los Angeles. Very happy to say we participated in the Access L.A. program today. This is a must-needed venue to address the many job issues we have here and to make the business environment much more friendly. AT&amp;T has a lot of existing private-public partnerships. We look to continue those partnerships to create more, to make the business environment much better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donovan. And Ryan's not here either anymore? Okay. We're going to go to, our next speaker will be Clayborne. Before he comes forward on general public comment, Mr. Alakon wanted to, I know a lot of folks that are here with Occupy L.A., wanted to know kind of some of the game plan and how the legislative process works with the motion that was introduced. You can't vote on it, very rare exceptions, the same day it's introduced. So Mr. Alakon will give you an idea of what's going to be happening, then we'll continue with public comment.
Yes, just in response to some of the speakers, the, first of all, Mr. Rosendahl and I have combined our resolutions in one. He is co-presenting it with me. Five other council members have agreed to second the motion. And that resolution will be referred technically to IGR Committee, which I chair, and I will waive the hearing and send it directly to council, so it will be heard on Tuesday of next week. The resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Clayborne, and then John Walsh on item 30, if you'd like to come forward.
Hello. I'm here with Occupy Los Angeles because this country, and in fact, this world, is facing an economic crisis of unprecedented magnitude. And it's causing the people to suffer. We see increasing homelessness, joblessness, a decay of our infrastructure. And what is going to be necessary to move this forward is a new energy among the people, a new involvement in the people, a new democracy, both economic and political. And we've seen with the movement that started with Occupy L.A., we might even say we've seen even earlier with what we call the Arab Spring, and the uprising of people in Europe against the cutbacks, a new spirit among the people. And I think that is the greatest salvation, not only for the people of L.A. and the city of L.A., but the people of this planet and its future, because in the long run, that's what's really at stake. Do we go down a path of death and destruction, or do we move forward with a new light? I'm glad to be here on the steps of City Hall and not be protesting City Hall in this, and not be protesting the police in this, because with regards to this, I think we are all on the same side. We all face the same problems. The police themselves face harder work in doing their job because of the economic crisis and the dislocation that causes. At the same time, they face layoffs too. And the city faces a much tougher job in terms of providing the services they need to provide because of this. So I thank you for your support. I hope to see it continue, and then we can all move forward together.
Thank you very much. On item 30, Mr. Walsh. After Mr. Walsh, we'll come back to general public comment. Max Funk will be after Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-A-L-E-N-D-S dot org. 100,000 requests a month. 30, we got a nice dog and pony show. The wall between the haves and the have-nots are getting thicker. It was as if we weren't even in the room when this went on. In fact, you closed and made it a private meeting, and I had to point out it was a public meeting before I was allowed in here. This is what, this is, the only thing that saved us, don't thank them. Thank Ralph M. Brown, who's been there 40 years, who passed a bill in California that allows us to speak at meetings. Ralph Brown gave it to you. They do everything they can to get rid of these bills that we're allowed to speak. Go to New York, go to Chicago. None of these other cities let you speak like this. None of the other cities do, and you know they don't. And I'm telling you right now, business, I want to tell you, jobs, jobs, jobs. Okay, here's the story. Adolf Hitler dies, and he ends up at the pearly gates. St. Peter says to him, "I will let you in if you can give me three good reasons why you built the concentration camps and killed 6 million Jews." And you know what Hitler said? "Jobs, jobs, jobs." Jobs, job, jobs, dead-end jobs. What are we talking about? HollywoodHighlands.org. If you want to know what's going on in this city, and this city is the leader. Let's see the mayor come up here. I give my last 14, 15 seconds to the mayor, who is allowing these people to sleep in the rain because he won't sign an executive order.
Max Funk is our next speaker on general public comment. While he's coming up, let's open the roll again on 30. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Back on general public comment. Yeah, Mr. Alakon?
I think there's some confusion. I think I need to say, I just sent the memo over to the mayor requesting that he use the executive order power to allow the protesters to stay on the park area at night as opposed to moving on the sidewalk. And the mayor has not, the mayor has not refused anything at this point. In fact, I don't even think his office has received the memo, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And after that will be Bilal Ali. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. Max Funk, and I'm here to support Occupy L.A. as an individual. I have come with the single demand that I am a human being, and I demand economic justice. I am not here to participate in the destruction of anything, but rather the building of something. And in order to do that, we have to recognize what's deficient with the old structure and start focusing on what's going to be improved in the new structure. The system that we have right now is unfair because the supports that we rely upon, which is the intellectual property or the laws of the federal government, place favoritism on one single entity in the process of capitalism, which we know as banks. In United States Code, Section 1217, banks are defined as institutions that accept deposits, and secondly, make payments, and third, make investments. And loans are just investments. We cannot move value or money efficiently when we have to subject ourselves to a borrowing and lending scenario, and we can't immediately handle our tax commitments if we are always being intermediated by people who are trying to get their hands on money that comes at below cost of capital prices. So my suggestion is, we ask the federal government to take on a central accounting system that enables citizens to pay one another individually, and so we can also automate our tax payments so that we can replenish the coffers of cities like Los Angeles and the states of California and anywhere else where people can actually get the process of business moving much more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bilal Ali is our next speaker. After that is Marlon Stern.
Good morning, City Council. I mean, you know me, I've been giving you a break, and I haven't been before you for a while. Bilal Ali, Executive Director of the Inner Cities Action Alliance. I want to give a shout-out to my favorite council member, my council member from my district, Ed Perry. Want to give a special shout-out to Council President Garcia, who definitely should be our next mayor, the City of Los Angeles, if there's any justice in this city. I'm also a resident of 200 Main Street, Occupy L.A. I've been sleeping out there on the ground, I've been going home, and I've been sleeping there. I can't articulate any better than the previous speakers from Occupy L.A. explaining the economic situation in this country, but I'd like to speak on what's going on in Occupation L.A. We have many tendencies. We have many people from different status on the social ladder occupying the park out there. People coming from various backgrounds, understanding and experiences, collectively working together every night and day, collectively helping each other and building a community, and that not just a movement, but a community, which I haven't seen in this city, which is very, very balkanized. I haven't seen it in many years, so I'm commending it on that. I'm also saying this is a part of historic, this is a historic endeavor that's happening right now, that's going to keep rising and rising, like a tide to all social and economic injustices wash away. I'm asking this city council to support Councilman Alakon's resolution and support the mayor's, if he allows us to stay on the lawn. I'm asking you to be a catalyst, part of this historic thing, and not an impediment, and this, us all write in the history. Many have come before us and have paved the way for social and economic justice. I think it's incumbent on all of us to now build a vehicle to travel down that road. And this vehicle won't have any backseats, and no one's going to be sitting in the backseat. If we have to build this vehicle sideways, we all riding up front. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marlon Stern is our next speaker. After that is Emilio Ariola, and then Jesse Dodson.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm from Simi Valley, and I have no shoes on because they're soaking wet back at the campsite. But my current address is 200 North Spring Street. I'm a part of Occupy L.A. because I am a 2009 graduate of Cal State Northridge who can't find a job. I'm 27 and at the mercy of my father's L.A. County pension. I am here to fight for healthcare jobs and education and against the environmental degradation caused by rampant unchecked consumption. There is no economy without an earth. There are no humans without an earth. We cannot consume ourselves out of this. It is time to take action, and we are excited that you are considering supporting us. We can and must find a way to retain jobs in programs like libraries and museums and also reduce consumption. It is truly possible to do both. The solution is in yours and our hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Emilio Ariola, and then Jesse Dodson. After that is Catherine Knox-Davies. Good morning.
Good morning, Mrs. Garcia. My name is Emilio Ariola, and I'm here with Occupy L.A. I've been heading up the security, and I just want to thank you guys for your support. And I want to thank the LAPD for being there. We've had such a great relationship. We've kept it all at our level, and it's just been, this is absolutely amazing. I'm here because I got sick and tired of, being sick and tired of complaining about things. Ah, this isn't right, that's not right. I'm out here because I want to have my voice heard. I don't want my kids living in a world of greed, of these corporations. Greed is going to be the downfall of humanity, and I'm here because I don't want that to happen. I want to be heard. We are being heard. My current address is here, 200 Spring Street, and it will be. I don't have a home anymore. This is my home. And Mr. Garcia, you said to me, "On that north lawn, stay here as long as you need to." And by God, I'm going to stay here as long as it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Dodson is our next speaker, and Catherine Knox-Davies will follow, then Chris Cowan. Good morning.
Hello, everyone. I'm a 22-year lifelong resident of Los Angeles, and I can say that my entire conscious life, I've been waiting for a movement like this to happen, because it's really a people's movement. I was one of the few that was lucky enough to be at the first meeting in Pershing Square about a week and a half ago. There was about 30 of us, and now I get to see how this has grown, and what I have really seen grow is a sense of community, a sense of community like I have never felt before in my life. And I think that if you guys endorse this, that will send a message of solidarity, not only across the city, across the state, across the country, but truly across the world. And I think that it's really important that we all pan together, and we're standing for something now. And I'm just really happy to be here, and also, I'm camping outside, rain or shine, and I don't plan on leaving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Catherine Knox-Davies. Chris Cowan will follow, and then Amber Barrero.
My name is Catherine Knox-Davies. I'm one of occupiers of Occupy L.A. Been here since the very start. I had comments I was going to say, but quite honestly, the last few speakers have kind of shook me a bit, just remembering why we're here in the middle of it, you're just, you know, camping, trying to get the tents from the grass to the sidewalk to the grass to the sidewalk, and just sort of like trying to keep dry and everything, but just remembering all that. I wanted to thank the people who have put this resolution up for the proposal, those who have seconded it and supported it, and for the consideration coming this Tuesday. Thank you very much for your support. This movement really was started by the people, for the people. It's always lovely to have your support as well, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Cowan is next, then Amber Barrero, and then Art Goldberg.
Hi, my name is Chris Cowan, and I want to share two quotes that I kind of hear around Occupy L.A. and all the rest. One of them, with my 40 years in government, I've never seen Congress this bad. That was the, that was the Secretary of the Military who actually said that. And the other one that I want to share with you is, directly responsible for this economic crash is the greed of corporations and the overseers not doing their job. And that was Ben Bernanke that said that. That's why we're here. We know there's a problem. The system's broke, and we're saying, "Hey, guys, the system's broke. We're out here on the lawn doing our thing, but we're really not just out here on the lawn here. We're in Seattle, we're in 147 cities, we're in Toronto, we're in Europe, we're all over this world now. Greece is rioting today, Greece in the streets because of their economic issues that our banks caused." So that's why we're here, and I actually kind of am getting the idea that you guys are going to actually let us stay here, and for that, I thank you.
Thank you. Amber Barrero is next, then Art Goldberg, and then Lucero Márquez. Good morning.
Hello, thank you.
Would you just move the microphone down a little bit? Thank you, perfect.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name's Amber Barrero, and I am a student at Valley College. I'm as well the student member of the Los Angeles Community College District Board of Trustees. I ask you, please, to support personally who we are, the Occupy Los Angeles. This is my fifth day with the people here, and we all have a common goal, which is to let the voice of the people to be heard. The students, your taxpayers, need your support. The people out there sleeping at City Hall are tired of wealth inequality, tired of student loans, when education should be a right, or is a right. Raising fees in higher education, leaving our futures, our students and their future in debt, tired of the gap of rich and poor, and the diminishing middle class. We need a fair economy, and this is dire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Art Goldberg is our next speaker. Good to see you. And Lucero Márquez will follow, and then Armenia Garcia.
Yes, good to see you. Well, the one speaker said that they were born in Los Angeles. My family came here in the late 1860s, so that makes me, I think, the fourth generation to come here. My grandpa was the first kosher butcher before the turn of the century in East L.A. My grandpa was the first kosher butcher before the turn of the century in East LA. I want to say it's kind of an interesting day to be talking to you all here. It's the 10th anniversary of the Afghanistan war. We have spent trillions and trillions of dollars, our people being killed and the people of Afghanistan being killed, and yet we have no money for education. So it's willing, the world has turned upside down. How can we not have 20 kids per classroom, which would just take 300 million, which is one week in Los Angeles? And that's why people send their kids to private schools, they get small classrooms. 20 kids per classroom, one week of money that they spend in Afghanistan. This is craziness. The people now understand its craziness and that's why all over this country, people are beginning to rise up. This is just the beginning. Where it's gonna go, what form it's gonna take, nobody knows, but it will not be stopped. And I'm happy to say that I totally support the occupation. My grandkids were out there the other night. This is another generation. They're gonna bring their elementary school kid friends down here and I'm hoping they're gonna organize marches from the schools to come down to downtown Los Angeles. Because the only way we'll have any chance of changing the world is when the people seize the time and especially young people seize the time. And thank you for letting me speak here today and I'm hoping to see all of you out there camping in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you, Art. Lucero Márquez is our next speaker and Erminia Garcia.
Good morning. Hello, hi.
Good afternoon now.
Good afternoon now, oh, okay. Good afternoon. Um, my name's Lucero Márquez and excuse me if I'm a little wet, but I've been camping out in front of City Hall now for the past four, this'll be my fifth day. And I am here with Occupy LA. I was born in Los Angeles and my address is now 200 North Spring Street and I plan to be here as long as it takes. Why am I here? I'm here because I got tired to see the banks getting bailed out while us, the people, the 99%, got sold out. And who are the 99%? Who are we? People like me that owe $50,000 in student loans? People like me who have no healthcare? People like me who are unemployed, living with our parents? That's the 99%. I have so many other friends as well who are also unemployed and today I am here in support and asking for you to support and vote to pass this resolution so that we get the support that we need from our city. Also, to allow us to continue and actually stay on the lawn. Every morning at 5:00 in the morning, we wake up and we move our tents from the sidewalks to the lawn. Every night, again, we move our tents from the lawn to the sidewalks. We need your help. We need you to support us and the way you can support us today is again, allow us to stay on the lawn and pass this resolution to support Occupy LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Erminia Garcia. Erminia Garcia and then Poncho.
Hi, I'm Erminia Garcia. I'm here in support of the Occupy LA resolution. Occupy LA is a movement that was started by the people, for the people. We need to unite and stand against these big corporations and banks which have put us in the economic situation we are in. The 99% needs are being neglected. I am, you are, the police, the teachers, these councilmen, everyone in this room is part of the 99%. And we are living under a system that only works for 1% of the population. And they do not know anything of the struggles we go through like unemployment, student loan, credit card debt, foreclosures and things us, the 99% deal with every day. People before profits, let's come together and change and it's time we wake up and take the future into our own hands instead of depending on people who don't represent us. And I'm also in agreement with if we can camp out in the lawn because it's very hard, well, it's just tiring waking up every day and putting the tents back and moving them back. And I don't think we're disturbing anybody. And yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Our last public speaker card is the man himself, Poncho.
Hey, um, I'm occupying LA, but I also happen to think that I'm occupying the world and that we all are. And there are corporations all around the world and corporations don't have borders. It's not just a problem here. This is a worldwide movement because it's a worldwide problem. It's not just our economy and war and politics that we have to put on the line here, it's our very existence. The pollution and things that are caused by corporations outsourcing to different countries like Malaysia and first world countries and even China to do their dirty work and pay people less and not have to deal with the pollution and regulations that they would have to deal with. And countries like this is putting a huge impact. The time for change is now and if we don't do something quickly and drastic, I'm afraid that we'll be thrown into a world war over water or over resources or just over distress, people putting riots and stuff like that. I'm afraid of fascism hitting the United States, we're a young country and I feel like most of the youth doesn't really know what to do. And that's why I'm here is because hopefully someone I'm with knows what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Zine, that'll close our general public comment. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Rosendahl, myself, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes met with the folks camped out yesterday afternoon and I was very impressed with the legitimacy to your concerns and your issues. Also, the way you presented yourselves. We've had other folks come in here and present themselves in a very disorderly fashion, so I want to compliment you on that. You are here for legitimate reason. I signed on Mr. Alarcon along with many of my colleagues to support the goal of what you're trying to achieve. We understand the issues, we understand the concerns, and this is not just a Los Angeles situation. This is a national, if not worldwide. I have many folks in my district that represent the Southwest Valley where there's now fences around their homes because the banks have taken those homes back, they've been kicked out of those homes. Now we're gonna have a wasteland as we have in other areas where we have people living on the streets because it is no longer permissible because they don't have the dollars, because their jobs have been taken away. It's a situation that doesn't have what America stands for, justice for all people, integrity with the system, and it's becoming more and more divisive. This city council is a nonpartisan body. We're here to represent the people and do that the best of our ability. We acknowledge there's an issue, there's acknowledged, we acknowledge a major issue and we're working to try and correct that. And Mr. Alarcon, with the rest of the colleagues, we're diligent in that, but I want to acknowledge your discipline within yourselves, that you're doing this in orderly fashion, the police are working with you, and it's not a hostile environment as we see in Greece and other parts of the world. So stay on the focus of what you're doing. You've got our support, at least my support and many of my colleagues. We empathize with you, we want to help, we want to make it better. And you're out there in the rain, which is a miserable condition to live in, and we want to make it better. So we are allies with you in trying to bring this about to a positive environment. Again, to Mr. Alarcon who's championing this, my other colleagues, thank you very, very much.
Again, this is not on the agenda today, so it's a brief comment.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is what democracy is at its best. It's the grassroots of America standing up. There was an Arab spring, you're seeing an American autumn and it's connecting all over America and frankly, all over the world. The priorities must change and if Washington can appreciate that, they'll withdraw the troops from these crazy wars, they will make the rich pay their fair share and reinvest in education, healthcare, infrastructure and the American people. So thank you for making the democracy work today.
Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to add to the choir and thank you for your inspiration. Many of the youngsters who are in high school, who are right now trying to get into college where there are no classes, teachers are being laid off. We're telling young people, "You need to get your As and raise your grades and score high in your SAT." And you get this blank look, like for what? If the college is not even there? They're shutting down a lot of our classrooms and it's a shame that we condemn the future, or at least the perspective of a bright future of our kids because of the leadership that's not being demonstrated by the corporations and by this ugly junior high-ish mentality in Congress where they do not want to look at compromise and see what's best for our children. So I thank you for the inspiration. I'm hoping more people will get involved and that we start voting with our wallets, that we start looking at our own ways of sustaining ourselves and let them know that they want our dollar, they should be truly act Americans. Thank you very much.
Mr. Alarcon, follow up, Mr. Weezer.
I really, I really don't want to make a statement, but the resolution stands on its own, but I do want to commend the LAPD for working with us to ensure the safety of the peaceful demonstration so that the story is not about a police and protester clash, but about the message that they are presenting. And so thank you so much for that message, but at the same time, I want to give particular credit to Chief Pasinger who worked very hard to find a way to make this happen in and have peaceful coexistence.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, and I know it's brief because this was not agendized, but I just want to thank you for what you're doing. As an immigrant, my family came to this country for the American dream. It's dissolving and you're making that very clear by standing up and saying, "We want the American dream to stay alive for everyone." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Thank you for the public comment on this matter. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That brings us to item 24 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Labonges, before 24.
Point of information, Mr. City Clerk, I believe the Nobel Peace Prize is presented in a public building in the City Hall. So I think it's only appropriate that people come here and voice it. A lot of work has to be done, as our city attorney will tell you, but I just wanted to make the fact that the Nobel Peace Prize is what is the most noblest of all prize, is in the Town Hall in Oslo, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, it's in Oslo.
So I just wanted to make that point as we hear about things that are beyond our control in the sense, but not beyond our voices and our ears. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonges. So number 24, public comment, Mr. John Walsh. John Walsh. And thank you, folks, for being here and for your orderly dismissal. Thank you. Mr. Walsh, number 24, sir. Two minutes on the clock.
It won't take two minutes. If I count Labonges as a yes, there are now eight votes for the, for the, for the motion. So the motion has won. Eight, eight of you have voted for the motion. I'm counting Labonges as a yes. So we won.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, number 24. Anybody want to speak on that? Seeing no one, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 29 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, number 29. Two minutes. Mr. Walsh, 29, sir.
Sean Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, Walsh Confidential, not born in LA, I plan to die in LA, I hope that counts, and of course, the founder of Preoccupy LA. Just want to say, number 29, Broadway and Brazil Streets, excellent, and this is just the start of the revolution. And the revolution will be televised. It's televised today, Channel 35.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. On that matter, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, there was a request from a member to send that matter forthwith.
Forthwith. That'll be the direction. Next item, please.
Mr. President, we have remaining items scheduled for closed session or today's special meeting.
Let's go to the special meeting. We have one item on special meeting?
Yes, sir. First, let me call the roll. Alarcon, Cardenas, England, or Weezer, Caress, Correa, Labonges, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, West, and Zine, Garcetti. 13 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
We have Mr. Walsh, number 36. Two minutes, Mr. Walsh.
I only need two minutes when I'm on the losing side. When I'm on the winning side, I can do it in 15 seconds.
There you go.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
I'll give you a plug for that, HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anyone on this matter? No one? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very well. Let's go back to the regular meeting. Hold on, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah.
Forthwith, okay, Mr. Rosendahl, forthwith. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes, I would.
Very good. That leaves the item scheduled for closed session.
31, 32, 34, and 35?
31, 32, 34, and 35, yes, sir.
And there's a request to reconsider number one.
Very good, let's do that first then, sir.
So did we ever act on this?
Item number one was continued.
There's a motion circulated on this here.
Number one was continued, so let's bring number one forward. Mr. Walsh, you have a card on number one. He's gonna pass. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes.
Mr. President, we should first reconsider the matter.
All right, so let's reconsider number one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Matters before, it's Mr. Labonges.
Thank you. As per circulated motion on this for approval.
Mr. President, motion 1A has been submitted and distributed to the council members for consideration. That's motion Labonges, Reyes.
Colleagues, without objection, so amended. Seeing no one on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to today's matters that are scheduled for closed session.
Closed session, so let's secure the chambers and go into closed session. So those of you in the chambers, if you're not here for the closed session items, you need to leave. We will return after the closed session. Thank you very much.
What's up, boxer? Where you from? Hey, what's up, Johnny? What's up?
I give a...
Man, the good girl's on the corner. Yeah, I'm a friend, right? I'm a friend, right?
I'm running!
Get back, you son of a bitch! Hey, come on, man!
Forget it, I'm going to school.
You have a choice to make! Make sure it's the right one!
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: Lock it, or lose it.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode! By clearing brush two hundred feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back! Get the message, be prepared!
Water in L.A. is limited. Every drop is precious, but we can all do our share. Use a broom instead of a hose. Wash your car only with a shut-off nozzle. Fix water leaks. Choose drought-tolerant plants, and run your sprinklers based on your street address. Odd addresses on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And even addresses on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays, before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. The future of L.A. is in our hands. And that's a good thing.
but its damage is very real. The damage by invasive pests. Learn about stopping their attack at hungrypests.com because they're here and they're hungry.
I'll be home in a minute.
Well, the party's just getting started, so hurry home, honey.
Talk to you.
Yes, good job.
Happy birthday to you.
Slow down, your family is waiting for you. Watch the road.
Hay escasez de agua en Los Angeles. Cada gotas preciosas. Todos podemos hacer nuestra parte. Use una escoba en vez de manguera. Lave autos con válvula de sierra automático. Repare fugas. Use rociadores los días que le corresponden a su domicilio. Domicilios sin pares los lunes, miércoles y viernes. Domicilios pares los martes, jueves y domingos. Antes de las nueve de la mañana o después de las cuatro de la tarde. El futuro está en nuestras manos y eso es algo bueno.
What's up, Beto? Where you from?
I'm from...
Hey, what's up, Johnny? What's up?
Happy birthday.
Man, that was good, dog.
Hey, I know Fred, right?
I know Fred, right?
Come on.
Hey, buddy.
Get back in there, man!
Hey, come on, man!
Forget it, I'm going to school.
You have a choice to make. Make sure it's the right one!
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[608.12][608.12]102
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[668.12][668.12]103
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[868.12][868.12]104
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done.
A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[1065.12][1065.12]105
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done.
A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[1255.12][1255.12]106
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done.
A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[1445.12][1445.12]107
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done.
A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.[1646.12][1646.12]108
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
State veteran, while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done.
A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is life, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget
Every drop is precious, but we can all do our share. Use a broom instead of a hose. Wash your car only with a shut-off nozzle. Fix water leaks. Choose drought-tolerant plants and run your sprinklers based on your street address. Odd addresses on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And even addresses on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. The future of L.A. is in our hands, and that's a good thing.
You have a choice to make. Make sure it's the right one.
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it, or lose it.
harmless, but its damage is very real. The damage by invasive pests. Learn about stopping their attack at hungrypests.com, because they're here, and they're hungry.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back! Get the message: be prepared.
to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585, I have 5060 watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming...
We're back in session now on Channel 35 and in the City Council chambers. Mr. Clerk, what's the first item before us?
Item 31, Madam President.
All right, would you please open the roll on that item?
If I may read the recommendation into the record beforehand. For item 31, there is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled "Lumilla Clet" versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $425,000.
Okay, open the roll, then close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
For the record, in closed session, the vote was 12 to nothing with Council members Weston and Cardenas absent.
Thank you very much.
That would bring us to item 32. There is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled "Community Alliance for Open Space" versus City of Los Angeles and others in the amount of $379,031.78 plus interest.
All right, great. Open the roll, please. Close the roll.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? Anything? Okay.
Item 35. There is a recommendation for settlement in the case entitled "EEOC Claim" of Anthony Almeida Fire Department in an amount not exceeding $494,150.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. 10 ayes, one no.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to leave at 11:45 on October 14 due to city business.
Without objection.
That meets council policy. Councilmember Englander requests to leave at 11:00 on October 25 due to city business. That meets council policy.
That'll be without objection.
And Councilmember Krikorian requests to leave at 12:15 on October 12 due to city business. That meets council policy.
Again, without objection.
The desk is clear.
Right, members, are there any announcements? Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Works Committee that was scheduled for 2 o'clock today will begin at 2:30.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, announcements?
Yes, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee will begin in 5 to 10 minutes.
Mr. Corretts? Hold on a second, your mic's not on. Mr. Corretts needs his mic on.
There we go.
It's on now.
Personnel Committee will meet as scheduled time at 3 o'clock.
All right, great. Members, any other announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl's made a special request.
Thank you very much. Many of us knew Burton Spurber. Mr. Alarcon had relationships with him, Mr. Cardenas, but Norman Culler, who is my senior deputy counsel, it's his cousin. They grew up together, though there was an age difference, and I had the pleasure of being with Burton Spurber just about a month ago at dedication of a park at Playa Vista, and we kidded and laughed and we talked about Norman, his younger cousin. Well, he passed away, and he was a great contributor to society. He was a Los Angeles native and landscape industry pioneer. Burton Spurber passed away Friday due to complications from surgery. Born in Los Angeles on May 14, 1929, Bert graduated from North Hollywood High School and served as an Army Master Sergeant during the Korean War. He met his wife, Carlene, when he was 16, and they were married in 1949. Bert was the founder and chairman of Valley Crest Landscape, the nation's largest landscape services company. Valley Crest has been involved in countless high-profile landscape projects, including The Grove in Los Angeles, The Bellagio Hotel, and The Casino in Las Vegas, Disney's Annual Kingdom Theme Park in Florida, Fashion Island in Newport Beach, and the Dallas Cowboy Stadium. Bert learned landscaping business at an early age from his father, who owned a nursery as well as working after school for MG Nursery in North Hollywood in the '40s. Bert had a longtime, lifetime passion for horticulture and was a true lover of plants and landscaping. He even preferred to be called "the head gardener" instead of "CEO." Bert's other passions were magic. This was introduced to him by his uncle, a magician, at the Magic Castle in Hollywood. Bert became an accomplished magician and earned membership into the elite Inner Magic Circle of London. He also had one of the nation's largest collection of magic books dating to the 1500s and wrote many magic books himself. Bert was also a longtime supporter of the Jewish community in Los Angeles. Bert helped build a temple of Mount Zion in North Ridge, where he made a lifetime member. He also was instrumental in building what is now known as the American Jewish University in Los Angeles. Bert is survived by his wife, Charlene, his son, Richard, his daughters, Elise and Michelle, his sister, Deena, and seven grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his daughter, Wendy Jo. A memorial service was held today at 10 o'clock at Mount Sinai Memorial Park and Mortuary. May he rest in peace.
Okay. Mr. Lamont, did you want to second that?
Well, I think we all should.
All right, we'll put all members on.
But I wanted to say something, if I could.
Okay, let me go this way, and then I'll pick up. We'll put all members on that. Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, I wanted to add to Bill's comments with several anecdotes. Burton Spurber was a very special person, but to think that he took a company in North Hollywood that he founded with just a few employees and built it to a landscaping empire, if you will, in the United States of more than 9,000 employees is an amazing, amazing accomplishment for somebody who was a Valley guy before we knew what Valley guys were. Burton, we had a very special pleasure to open the Wendy Jo Park, where we actually dedicated a segment of a park in Silmar to his daughter who had passed. And he was clearly a very passionate, very loving father who cared so much for his daughter that he established a foundation or provided money to tackle the issues of cancer. But he explained to me, when he asked me, "Where are you from?", I said, "I'm from North Hollywood." He said, "Where in North Hollywood?". And I said, "Well, my dad emerged out of a little barrio called Orcasitas." And he said, "That's where my company emerged." And I looked at him, and I said, "What do you mean?". He said, "When we needed to hire employees, we would go to Orcasitas, and we would hire all the Mexicans that lived in that barrio, and in fact, I know some of them, and that's how my company grew, to now 9,000 employees." He was very well-known in my community for that kind of action. I went to the Japanese Community Center just recently, actually, it was their retirement home, and one of the former presidents of the Japanese Gardeners Association was explaining to me that what made Burton special and what made his company special was that he developed a process to take huge trees out of the ground and transfer them without killing them, and that was his specialty. And if you've ever worked with Valley Crest, you know, that's exactly what they do today, and they've continued to have a massive business on that. But I have to tell you more than that. If you can imagine a corporate executive, founder of this major company, being a magician, and the smiles and laughter that that kind of person brings to people, then I think it really paints the picture of who Burton Spurber was, because he was very well-liked. He cared about the people that worked for him. He provided good wages and decent benefits long before that concept was even heard of. He cared about the people from my father's barrio in Orcasitas and every other employee that he hired from there and elsewhere. But he was a very special person, and I want to thank Bill for letting me know about his passing. He was a great man, and hopefully, his son, Richard, will keep the spirit of Burton Spurber alive.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. LeBond?
Just on that case, this was a guy who's an American hero, as Richard spoke of, but he was 19 when he bought the business for $700, as stated in there, and how he grew. And Valley Crest is the best on any job, the Los Angeles State Park. Valley Crest is the best. And I had a great opportunity, because I always ask people what high school they go to, he went to North Hollywood, I believe his wife went to Fairfax. They would take the red car through the Coinga Pass. And Richard, when you talk about a Valley guy before a Valley guy, I think it was only San Fernando, Canoga Park, Van Nuys, and North Hollywood were the high schools when he was growing up in the Valley. So he truly was a Valley guy, and what a great leader for his work. And if you ever have an opportunity to look at their work, it's the greatest work all. God bless his memory.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Weezer, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Jamal Assad Navarro, who passed away on September 27 after a hard-fought battle with colon cancer at his home in Los Angeles, surrounded by immediate family members. Born on December 21, 1979 in Los Angeles to Norma and Pete Navarro, he is survived by his parents and brothers Gabriel Magón and Sandino, and countless friends and extended family members, including his only surviving grandparent, Helen Navarro. His mother, Norma Navarro, was a former commissioner on the Pueblo Commission, and his father, Peter, has been an LA-based activist attorney for many, many years. Jamal was an exceptional artist, avid bicyclist, and someone who cared deeply about our environment. He graduated from John Marshall High School, Mr. LeBond, in 1998. He moved to the San Francisco Bay Area in 2000 and was working for United Airlines during the 9/11 attacks. Having returned to Los Angeles after the layoffs in the airline industry, Jamal was working for Occidental College's campus dining when in July of 2007 he was diagnosed with advanced stage IV colon cancer at the young age of 27. The life expectancy of those with cancer at that stage is two years or less. He treasured life and through sheer will and strength was able to double his life expectancy. After his first surgery and his first round of chemotherapy, he participated in the AIDS Life Cycle Bicycle Run from San Francisco to Los Angeles in June of 2009, where he helped raise funds for AIDS awareness and research. He was very proud of this accomplishment. As an avid bicyclist, Jamal's chosen mode of transportation through the streets of Los Angeles was his bicycle. He felt that by bicycling, he was doing his small part in the effort to ease the impact of global warming upon future generations. It should also be noted that Jamal was a young man with strong beliefs. He was opposed to what he believed were the federal government's military interventionist policies around the world. He was also an opponent of the death penalty, believing it was a medieval method aimed only at vengeance. Jamal was also a very spiritual person who embraced her intenants of Buddhism and Native American beliefs. He believed in the sanctity of life and loved animals. As a human being, one of his greatest qualities was his loyalty to his friends and his family. When things got tough, Jamal fought back hard. Jamal worked at Occidental College in Eagle Rock, where he was loved by his coworkers, and in lieu of flowers, the Navarro family is asking that contributions be made to the Jamal Navarro Art Scholarship Fund for struggling art students that is being developed for aspiring artists at Occidental College and Marshall High School. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes wants to second, as does Mr. LeBond wants to sign on too.
I was able to have conversations with Pete and what he was going through with his son, and my prayers are for the family.
Thank you. All right, members, are there any other adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Meeting is adjourned.